Good evening. Welcome to the Costa Mesa Planning Commission meeting for Monday, June 27, 2022. I call the meeting to order and ask Commissioner Russell to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, thank you, Commissioner Russell. Julie, we have commissioners on the dais tonight and also virtually. Could you call the roll, please?
Yes. We have Commissioner Rojas is absent. Commissioner Toller?
Here.
Commissioner Russell?
Here.
Vice Chair Zick is absent. Vice, I mean Chair Jericho?
Here.
Commissioner Vivar?
Here.
And Commissioner Erith?
Present.
Please note that Commissioner Toller and Commissioner Erith are present via Zoom. Thank you.
Also, Julie, for the record, our city attorney, Mr. Preziosi, is also on the Zoom call. Thank you very much. We have no announcements and presentations tonight, so that brings us to public comments. This is the portion of the agenda this evening where members of the public can address the Planning Commission on items that are within our jurisdiction but are not on tonight's agenda. So is anyone in the chambers tonight wish to speak during public comment? Again, this is for items not on our agenda. Okay, seeing none. Julie, do we have anybody on phone or Zoom?
No, we do not, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we'll close public comment. That will bring us to Commissioner comments. We'll start with Commissioner Erith.
No comments this evening. Thank you, Chair.
Okay. Commissioner Toller?
Not tonight, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Commissioner Russell?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Commissioner Vivar?
Nothing tonight either.
Okay, and I have nothing either. Not that I don't have anything to say, but just... Okay, we'll move on then to the consent calendar. We have no items on the consent calendar, so this will take us to a public hearing. Let's do this, actually. We have a... I'm going to rearrange the agenda just a little bit because we have one request by staff for public hearing, item number two, I believe, to continue the item. So Julie, could you read public hearing item number two into the record?
Yes, just a moment, please. Public hearing item number two, planning application 22-Josh-13 for cannabis distribution facility at 3505 Cadillac Avenue, Unit F3. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission continue this item to the next Planning Commission meeting of July 11, 2022. Please note that we have not received any public comments on this item.
Okay, thank you, Julie. The Chair is going to make a motion to continue this item to the July 11, 2022, public hearing. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, really quick, are we going to be opening the public hearing and continuing it?
No, we're just going to continue it. Okay?
Okay.
Yeah, I seconded it.
Okay, so we have a seconded by Commissioner Russell. Roll call, please.
Aye.
Commissioner Russell?
Aye.
Chair Jericho?
Aye.
Commissioner Vivar?
Aye.
Commissioner Erith?
Aye.
Okay.
That, that motion carried 5-0 with Commissioner Rojas and Vice Chair Zick absent.
Okay, thank you very much for that. That takes us to public hearing, item number one. Julie, if you could read that.
Yes, just a moment, please.
Mr. Chair, I think I need to recuse myself for this one.
That's correct. I remember Commissioner Toller, so take some time to go out and walk the dog or something, but don't be in the room. Thanks. It's so strange. I've never had a recusal, a virtual recusal.
Okay, sorry, just a moment. Let me also get, make sure to recuse.
That's fine. Take your time.
Did Commissioner Toller state what he was recusing himself for?
I believe he lives within the distance of the property.
Okay. Public hearing item number one, call to review planning divisions zoning approval B.C. 21-J-00147 for 1,072 square foot second-story addition remodel at 283 East 19th Street. Please note, we have not received any public comments on this item. This is a call to report any ex parte communications.
Commissioner Erith, any ex parte to report?
No, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Russell?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Vivar?
No.
Okay. And I have none to report. Mr. Jaeger, thank you.
Good evening. So this is the call to review, 283 East 19th Street. This was continued from the June 13 Planning Commission. Just as a reminder, this is a de novo hearing in which the Planning Commission can consider the project in its entirety. And also another reminder that second-story additions can be administratively approved by staff when they comply with the development standards and design guidelines. The site's located on R1 Zone on East 19th Street between Westminster Avenue and Santa Ana Avenue. The surrounding properties are all R1-zoned, and there's a mixture of one- and two-story residences on the block. The site is currently developed with a two-story second- or single-family residence with a detached two-car garage at the rear of the property with access to the alley. The neighbors of the project, residents at 279 East 19th Street, previously submitted a letter outlining their concern of the project. These concerns included the window modifications on the second floor looking over their property, new windows and Juliette balconies, potential shading, and the long facade. Since the previous hearing on June 13, the applicants have revised the plan in response to the neighboring concerns and direction provided by Planning Commission to modify the right-side elevation to keep the existing clear-story windows. And this was accomplished by modifying the floor plan on the second floor to include a previous storage room into bedroom two, which can allow for light ventilation and egress facing the rear of the property and not the neighbors'. The clear-story windows are above average eyesight, so there would be very minimal chance of anybody looking down into the neighbor's property. The applicants also provided a photograph from the location of the proposed Juliette balcony, which is facing the neighbors'. And due to the existing eight-foot fence, the 19-foot setback to the shared property line and the existing vegetation, there will be minimal impacts of the Juliette balcony on the neighbors'. If the balcony were to be flipped to the other side of the addition, then it's likely it would have a greater impact on the other neighbors because there's only a 10-foot setback on that side and the fence is only six feet. The appellant neighbors did review these modifications, and they have provided their consent to the changes. They noted that in the future, if they feel any adverse privacy effects, that they would add vegetation on their property. With that, there's no specific findings that need to be made because this was an administrative project. It complies with the development standards and complies with the design guidelines, and the neighboring appellant property has consented to the design. Staff recommends Planning Commission adopt a resolution to uphold the planning division approval of the second-story addition with the modifications to the right-side windows as provided by the applicants.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jaeger. Mr. Erith, do you have any questions of staff?
We do not, Chair. Thank you.
Commissioner Russell?
No questions.
Commissioner Vivar?
No.
Okay. I have none either. We'll open the public hearing and ask the applicant to come forward if that applicant's representative is here. Okay, just I have one simple question for you.
Okay.
So I just want to make sure that the modifications you've made to your design is okay with the property owner and you're ready to proceed?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much. Are the Arnolds here by any chance? Okay, I don't see them.
Chair, if I may, they indicated that they would not be attending tonight.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Jaeger. Thank you very much. We'll open the public hearing part of the public comment portion of the public hearing. Anybody wish to speak to this item? Please come forward. Okay, seeing none. Anyone on Zoom or telephone, Julie?
No, there's not, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we'll close public comment, and I will also close the public hearing and move that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution to uphold the planning division's administrative approval of the proposed second-story addition at 283 East 19th Street with the recommended design modifications as agreed to by the applicant and owners of the neighboring property located at 279 East 19th Street. Let me get back, make that motion. Okay, Commissioner Vivar, you made a motion. I'm assuming that's good. Okay. Commissioner Vivar, you want to second my motion?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion second. Any comments on the motion? Commissioners on the dais?
No.
Commissioner Erith?
No, sir. Thank you.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Toller?
He's abstained.
Oh, sorry. Commissioner Toller abstained. Commissioner Russell?
Yes.
Chair Jericho?
Aye.
Commissioner Vivar?
Aye.
Commissioner Erith?
Yes.
That motion carries 4-0 with Commissioner Toller abstaining and Commissioner Rojas and Vice Chair Zick absent.
Okay. If I could just say to your client, thank you very much for your patience. I was a little put off that you presented a project that was in every way in conformance with our zoning and our design standards, and it still took a year. So I hope we can avoid these kind of conflicts in the future. This should have been done a lot quicker. Thank you very much. Okay, that takes us to public hearing, item number three.
Just a moment, Mr. Chair. I'm going to-
Yes, take your time.
-bring Commissioner Toller back-
Okay.
...with us. Okay. Commissioner Toller is back with us, and let me read public hearing, item number three now.
Yes, thank you.
Public hearing, item number three, planning application 21-20 for retail cannabis storefront business with delivery located at 124 East 17th Street. Please note, we have received two public comments on this item that have been provided to the commission and made a part of the record. This is a call to report any ex parte communications.
Commissioner Erith, any ex parte communications to report?
No, Chair. Thank you.
Commissioner Vivar?
No.
Commissioner Russell?
No.
And I have none. So staff, we have a request to continue this item?
Yeah, that's correct. Chairperson Jericho, they are, they have received a letter from a neighbor, and they're requesting a continuance to try to look into the issues a little bit. The applicant is here tonight, if you'd like to hear them, but otherwise, they're just requesting a continuance.
To a date certain, or no?
To July 11.
July 11. Okay. Well, so if we don't open a public hearing, do we have to renotice it then?
That, that might be an issue, so it would be good if you did open it for just the discussion on the continuance.
Okay, so I'll open the public hearing, ask the applicant to come forward if he is here, or she. Yes, sir. Good evening. Your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, sir. Peter Ischak.
Okay.
And I'm at 3520 Cadillac Avenue, Costa Mesa, California.
And Mr. Ischak, you made a request for a continuance?
Yes, sir. We received a letter from one of the neighbors, and we'd like to address it and handle it.
And the July 11 continuance date is enough time, you feel, to-
Yes, sir.
Okay, excellent. Thank you very much, sir. Okay. Commissioner Erith, do you have any questions for the applicant? We're just kind of confirming the continuance.
No, sir.
Commissioner Vivar?
No, sir.
Commissioner Russell? Okay. All right, then. Anyone in the audience wish to speak to the request for continuance on this item? Okay, seeing none. Anyone on Zoom or telephone, Julie?
No, there's not, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, sir, very much. Okay, so the Chair will move to continue the public hearing on this item to the regularly scheduled meeting of July 11, 2022. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion on the floor by the Chair, seconded by Commissioner Russell. Any comments on the motion? Commissioner Erith?
No, sir. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Russell?
No.
Commissioner Vivar?
No.
Okay, none for me either. Julie, please call the roll.
Commissioner Toller?
No. I mean, yes, I'm sorry.
I forgot, I forgot you were back.
I was answering your previous question.
Yeah, Commissioner-
You didn't get to me.
Commissioner Toller, did you have any?
I voted yes.
Okay. I'm assuming you had no comments on the motion. Sorry about that.
No comments. Yes on the motion.
Okay, very good.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Russell?
Yes.
Chair Jericho?
Aye.
Commissioner Vivar?
Aye.
Commissioner Erith?
Yes.
That motion carries 5-0 with Commissioner Rojas and Vice Chair Zick absent.
Okay, gentlemen, we'll see you on the 11th. Okay, public hearing, item number four, please.
Public hearing, item number four, planning application 21-14 for retail cannabis storefront business with delivery located at 1921 Harbor Boulevard. Please note, we have received public comments on this item that have been provided to the commission and made a part of the record. This is a call to report any ex parte communications.
Thank you, Julie. Commissioner Erith, any ex parte communications to report?
Yes, Chair. I've talked to Michael Moselli twice.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Russell?
I've had a couple of conversations with the applicant in the past, yes.
Okay, and Commissioner Vivar?
Yeah, I did a site visit of Michael Moselli's Mezurac site and have been corresponding with him via email the past few days, and I also spoke to community members about the item.
Okay, and I have had no communications with the applicant on this particular application. So with that, we'll have Ms. Nguyen, please provide the staff report.
Thank you, Chair, and good evening, and good evening, commissioners. I'm Nancy Nguyen, Senior Planner with the Economic and Development Services Department. Planning application 21-14 is a request for a conditional use permit to establish a retail cannabis dispensary with delivery, which is a state license type 10. The type 10 license also allows for retail delivery. The proposed business name is High Seas. And as you may all recall, the retail cannabis uses are allowed in the city pursuant to the ballot measure, Measure Q. The city's cannabis business permit application and review process is quite extensive. It first includes a pre-application review to verify the zone of the property, a review of the existing parking and landscaping conditions, and as well as the separation distances from sensitive uses. After successful completion of the pre-application, the next review is the cannabis business permit, or CBP for short. The CBP is essentially a background check of all the owners and review of the security and business plans for compliance with state and city regulations. A notice to proceed letter is then issued if the applicant has met all of the CBP criteria, including passing the background checks. The applicant can then move on to the next step, which is the CUP. If, if the CUP is approved by Planning Commission, the next steps in the process is, oh, excuse me, would be applying for building permits, city inspections, and finally issuance of a CBP and a city business license. As mentioned, the proposed storefront with delivery is located at 1921 Harbor Boulevard. The subject property is Zone C2, which is the general business district commercial zone. Existing development on the property consists of an approximately 7,200-square-foot single-story commercial building, which also includes surface parking located at the rear of the building. As you can see in this zoning map, the property is surrounded by other commercial zone properties, and it also abuts an existing residential zone property. Here are some site photos of the existing property, which shows the current condition of the, the building, as well as the rear parking lot. The previous tenants include Barbecue's Galore, which is a retail use, and Malacca's Training, which is a fitness studio. According to city records, the building has been vacant since 2020. Next is a site plan of the existing property. The red border represents the approximate property lines of the subject property. The area shown in light green is the existing building, which, as mentioned in the staff report, it has legal non-conforming floor area ratios as well as building setbacks. The area shown in light yellow is the current driveway entrance off of Harbor Boulevard that, that provides access to the subject property, and it's about 18 feet wide when measured to the property line of, of the subject property. The surface parking lot at the rear currently has 12 legal non-conforming parking spaces. There's also existing street parking available along Harbor Boulevard. This is the proposed site plan, which shows the proposed site improvements, including new landscaping and new parking lot. The project will increase the legal non-conforming 12 parking spaces to 16 spaces, which also includes a new bicycle rack. All the onsite parking provided would be for customer parking only, and all employee parking are proposed to be off-site at 1901 Newport Boulevard, which is a short, excuse me, which is within a short walking distance from the business. So the floor plan can be broken up into two major areas, what I'll call the, the retail sales area, and then, secondly, the, the back-of-the-house area. The retail sales area, which is shown in green here, includes the customer check-in lobby, as well as the actual retail floor area, or retail sales floor, excuse me. The remainder of the, of building would be dedicated to, towards back-of-the-house areas, which is shown in red here, and those remain the kind of the support area, which includes offices and storage rooms. The facility also has two entrances, one off of Harbor Boulevard, which is along the public sidewalk, and one at the rear of the building, which, which is accessed from the surface parking lot. So in addition to the various site improvements that I mentioned, the applicant is also proposing a major facade improvement to the existing commercial building, which includes new exterior material, new paint, new architectural features, in addition to new lighting for security and new signage. I do want to note that these signs shown on these conceptual renderings will require a separate review from the CUP, but they are shown for reference. So the applicant did provide a detailed business plan that has already been evaluated by the city's security cannabis consultant, HDL. The business plan describes the owner's professional experience, proof of capitalization, and day-to-day operations. The business plan is not attached because it does contain proprietary details, but the applicant is available should the commission have specific questions about it. In addition to the business plan, the applicant also provided a professionally-prepared security plan, which the city's cannabis consultant has also reviewed and determined that the appropriate security measures were included to address the city and state requirements. In terms of conditions of approval, similarly as, as other projects, other retail projects the commission has reviewed, this project also concludes more than 50 standard conditions of approval, which covers, for example, no consumption on-site, parking management, order control, aid restrictions, and reminder for applicant, for, excuse me, compliance with state and local, local regulations. So in addition to the standard conditions, staff has also proposed site-specific conditions of approval to ensure compatible land uses with the abutting residential property. These conditions include posting signs within the parking lot to remind customers and vendors to be considered of their noise level when entering and exiting the parking lot, requiring a parking attendant to ensure customers and vendors abide by the parking lot signs, as well as limiting the hours the business can dispose their waste in the exterior trash enclosure to avoid potential noise impacts during sensitive hours of the day. So with that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution to find that the project is categorically exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEAC for short, exempt per SEAC guidelines, Section 15301, as well as approve planning application 21-14, subject to the conditions of approval and code requirements. The applicant has also prepared a presentation for the commission tonight, but this concludes staff's presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nguyen. Commissioner Erith, do you have any questions of staff on the presentation?
Thank you, Chair. I have no questions for staff this evening. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Toller?
Yeah, I just have one question. The businesses that were there before, I think it was Barbecue's Galore or something like that. I go in Google Earth, I go back in time, and it looks like there were two businesses doing well in 2021, less than a year ago. So do we know what happened with those businesses?
Ms. Nguyen, do you know?
Yes, Commissioner Toller. For Malacca's Training, staff did look into the business license records, and it was noted that the business was closed in 2019. For Barbecue's Galore, staff did similarly as well and noted that the last record available on our business license was in 2020.
Okay. Okay, that's it, that's it for now. Thank you.
Okay. It could have been just a lease expiration. Commissioner Toller, who knows?
Sure.
Okay, Commissioner Russell, do you have any questions on the presentation?
On Fairfax Drive, is that, is it wide enough that cars can go either direction on that, so we don't have a situation where it's one-way or traffic congestion?
Yes, Commissioner Russell. So the, the plan does show a approximately 19-foot-wide driveway when measured to the property line, but the full, if we were to measure all the way to the apron of, of the driveway entrance, it's 25 feet.
Okay. The other question I have is, I know that residents and business owners get notified. How far ahead of time do they get notified that, that this is coming before us?
At least 10 days before.
10 days?
Yes, the notice is posted on the site at least 10 days prior to, and same for receiving public notices in the mail.
Okay, thank you. And I, we got the one letter, and just to, to be sure, the fire department's reviewed this, and they didn't have any concerns about egress and-
That's correct. Based on the location of the building and some other factors, the fire department did not require some certain things, like a fire lane, or other items like that.
Okay, I think those are all questions I have right now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Vivar?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have several questions.
Okay, please, go ahead.
So thank you for the very detailed staff report. I do have a couple of questions. So my first question is regarding the public notices for this item. So as I understand that the notices go to businesses and residents within certain radius of the proposed site. And so I'm curious, for the Mobile Home Park, did the notice for this item tonight, for this project, did that just go to the owners of the Mobile Home Park, or did that go to the 40 or so residents of the Mobile Home Park as well? And if so, was it in English as, in Spanish as well as English? And if so, was it in English, in Spanish as well as English?
Commissioner Vivar, the notices are mailed to all property owners and occupants within 500 feet of the site. So even if it is a renter of the Mobile Home Unit, they would still receive it, because they live within, they reside within 500 feet. I'm sorry, I already blanked on your second question. I apologize.
Yeah, yeah, no problem. If those notices were also sent in Spanish as well as English?
They were only sent in English.
Second question I have. So regarding the possible noise and light concerns that were detailed in the staff report, in the event that the site were to have a light impact for the Mobile Home Park residents, and I'm thinking especially of Unit 41, which is like that one home right behind their wrought iron fence there, and any possible noise complaints from that house or from the neighbors in the Mobile Home Park, are there any possible, are there any mitigation measures that have been explored in the event that there were to be a noise and/or light concern?
Yes, staff has worked with the applicant to try to design certain features of the exterior to make sure that, for example, lighting should be faced away from the Mobile Home Unit and shielded down. There is conditions of approval to ensure that. We will require a lighting plan, as well as a photometric study, which the photometric study staff would review to ensure that light levels don't spill over to the adjacent, excuse me, abutting residential, more than half a foot candle. Other features or other designed features to help minimize impacts also include redesigning, relocating, or designing the trash enclosure in a way that would avoid noise impacts. I don't know if that, I'm sorry, I thought I answered your question.
Yeah, so you said regarding the light, something about candles?
Yes, so generally, a standard that cities have used to determine light levels is a foot candle, is considered like, you know, adequate lighting. Anything less than that is obviously not as well-lit, and the goal is to obviously provide as adequate lighting for security purposes within the property, including the parking lot, but also not spilling over into the abutting residential property, and particularly that unit that you are referring to, Commissioner.
And is there a threshold in terms of lumens for light and decibels for noise that we would be looking at?
The general plan, the city's general plan does include noise levels that are considered acceptable, so there are noise standards within our general plan. As far as light level, while there is no set standard in the general plan, there are guides from certain organizations that are specifically about light levels.
And so the general plan probably refers to those, I guess those are standard practice, right?
Correct. It's kind of like the best practices, if you will.
Sure. Okay. Do we have any transportation services staff here tonight?
I believe we do.
Yes, Ms. Rosales is here. So if you have questions, if you can come up, thank you.
Good evening, Ms. Rosales.
Just give her a minute to... Go ahead. She's, go ahead and ask your question, Mr. Vivar.
All right, good evening. Just a couple of questions. So earlier, we had a conversation in which I asked about the training for certified flagger, just for the sort of record here, and for my fellow commissioners, would you mind sort of explaining briefly what the certified flagger training from the ATSSA is, and like the general, the cost of what that training is and what it entails?
Yes, Commissioner Vivar. So there's training, it's called Certified Flagger Training, which the certification program, there's several programs that have been acknowledged by the American Traffic Safety Services Association, and there's online courses available, but that actually give you a certificate when you complete the training program. The typical training program is a four-hour training plus a test. There's online options, and the online options range in price from about $75 to $100 for the full four-hour course with the test.
Okay. And just regarding sort of their proposed parking attendant operation, so I had a conversation with the applicant in which I asked sort of how they would work, and in terms of the signage that they would provide in the event that the parking lot was full, and just, I was asking kind of along the lines of, would it be possibly confusing for the Mobile Home Park residents, or would it, would it say be placed in the way of vehicles that they might have to sort of weave around it? And I believe the applicant mentioned something about a lot-full sign being placed, if I remember correctly, on the sidewalk? Would that be allowed on the sidewalk, the sign?
Commissioner Vivar, the sign could be placed as long as it doesn't impact pedestrian travel and maintains appropriate ADA widths.
So that would be four feet, correct?
At a minimum, preferably five feet.
Sure. So I dived a bit into the trip generation rates for this driveway, and evening rates for the, are kind of what concerned me a little bit here. So the, the Mobile Home Park, I think, was 40, sorry, 14 trips in and 23 out, and the peak hour between 4:00 and 6:00 p.m. And for the proposed cannabis use, it was 30 in and 30 went out, and I didn't even run the numbers for the automotive, and, or for the businesses with those six parking lots that face directly to the 1924 Harper site. So are there any maybe circulation concerns here with the amount of traffic that'll be going through that driveway there? Or is that adequate?
Yeah, Commissioner Vivar, the net increase in trips from the existing use is estimated to be 26 p.m. peak hour trips, which is, would be equivalent to 13 people in the p.m. peak hour, so 13 trips in, 13 trips out. So 26 increase in the p.m. peak total.
So we foresee people accessing the site using that driveway, correct? And the driveway that would also be used by the Mobile Home Park residents?
That's correct, Commissioner Vivar.
Do we have any possible, I haven't really looked at all the numbers, so that was the sort of increase, you said, I think, 23, right?
Commissioner Vivar, 26 would be the net increase.
Okay. But in terms of the total trips that we expect, do we have a number for that? Or do we not look at that in this?
Commissioner Vivar, we do have a total number of trips. In the p.m. peak, it's for this site, it would be 72 total p.m. peak trips.
And do we foresee any possible concerns with pedestrian vehicle impacts from Mobile Home Park residents possibly walking out through that potentially busy driveway in the evening peak hours?
Commissioner Vivar, we do not anticipate any impacts.
And nor do we foresee any concerns with their plan to seal off that part of their parking lot, right? I think they want to put a little wall between their site and the beauty supply store parking lot next door, so we're okay with that, right?
That would be, that would be okay. That's correct, Mr. Commissioner Vivar.
Mr. Chairman, I think that's it for me. I believe those were all my questions. Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Rosales.
Thank you, Commissioner Vivar. So I have a couple of questions I want to walk, and these are all related to parking, and I want to, I was going to ask the questions in a bit, but I want the applicant to hear them, so they can think about some possible answers. So I'm a little concerned about the parking situation, in, to the extent that the applicant has arranged a parking agreement with 1901, which is great. And, you know, from my perspective, you know, or somebody who's lived where you could park close by to where you're going and not have to walk too far. In LA, people park in a garage and walk all over the place. I don't even see the distance as being that big of a deal, just as kind of a generalized perception of, you know, if I was going to go to this particular retail outlet, park at 1901, walk all the way over, get my stuff, and walk all the way back, it might be a bit of a hassle, but I might do some other things in between. My real concern is that that lot's going to get full, and, based on what I'm looking at in terms of how the applicant is merchandising his store, and the experiences they're going to create, you know, I would think that if this is approved, it's going to be very popular. So I'm really concerned about parking being cannibalized from 1907, 1909, 1913, at Costa Mesa Courtyards, which is already being used by Triangle people. So I want to understand what is going to be the enforcement action, or what is the agreement between the applicant and the immediate tenant's property owners if High Seas customers are parking next door, or parking at Courtyard and walking over, or parking at Triangle or walking over? There's no agreements there, and it's a lot easier for me to park in the retail center right next door and walk in and walk out than it is to go all the way over to 1901. So I want to have a really good understanding of how High Seas customers aren't going to be parking in 1907, 1909, and 1913. Those are perfectly legitimate businesses, too, that need those parking spaces. So I want to, did you guys look at that? Was it discussed? Did you have, is there an operational plan on how to make sure that, you know, parking on another property to get to this particular store is, doesn't become habit?
Yes, Chair, we did look into that as well, and the applicant definitely has some more they can share, but from a more purely staff perspective, yes, we took a look at just how do we ensure that they don't park, or they, as in customers, don't park into the surrounding neighborhood, excuse me, the adjacent properties. The applicant is proposing a wrought iron fence between, on the south side of their property, so to avoid customers from trying to cut through that part of the side of the property to be able to park on the alleys, alley side of those.
Is that where that alley coming in from 19th takes a hard left, and then you put a fence there? Is that what we're talking about?
Directional challenge, I apologize.
Okay, so, so there's that alley coming in next to Social, where you can, from 19th, you can run all the way back.
Yes, yes, exactly. Correct.
And then that alley hangs a hard 90-degree left, and then you go into the back lot where...
Where the subject property's parking lot is.
Are you going to be able to access by vehicle this business through that alley from 19th?
You can only access the business and the parking lot off of the existing driveway entrance to Harbor Boulevard.
Okay.
So that access from the back alley would be, lack of a better word, cut off, to, again, overweight properties from kind of cutting through that or going on to other properties to park. On the, on the other side, obviously, there would be a parking attendant, and the tenant would be required to monitor. Staff can, staff would, excuse me, staff would, staff suggests, I think it's Operation Condition Number 2425, that could be modified to also say that the parking attendant needs to also ensure that customers are only parking within the dedicated customer parking at High Seas and not in the surrounding businesses.
Okay. All right, so I think that's fine, in theory. We'll see how it works in practice if this is approved. But I have a sneaking suspicion that very few people are going to use the 1901 parking structure. I just, I just, this is from experience of having watched in another jurisdiction where I'm representing a property owner, where a Raising Cane's opened right next door in a very small parcel, and the spillover parking is coming over into our property, and it's problematic, where we've had to bring in another security guard to boot people out. So I'm trying to avoid parking conflicts. I know we can put a fence up, but I think 1907, 1909, and 1913, you can, there's, there's a few parking spaces right in front of those businesses, and I just, I'm really worried that lot-full sign, oh, look, I just went down 75 feet, and there's some spots right there, I'll park in there. So there may need to be more than one attendant, but we'll see how it goes. But that, so that's my concern, I wanted to share that, and maybe the applicant can address my concern about the parking. So that's all the questions and comments I had on that. I will open the public hearing and ask the applicant to come forward. Thank you for your report, Ms. Nguyen. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Chair Darko and Commissioners. I just wanted to start off really quick by just saying thank you to all of you for all the time and effort you've put into this. Our industry is, as you know, very complex, and our projects are very detailed, and it's greatly appreciated. I also just want to thank staff over the last several months to, we've worked so hard on this and really get this thing so we can be here today in front of you.
And can I just, and so...
Sure.
I opened the public hearing, didn't I?
Yeah.
Okay. Did you, have you read the staff report?
I did.
And you agree with the conditions of approval set forth in?
I do.
Okay, thank you, sir. Go ahead.
I do. So I guess before I jump into my presentation here, just to kind of address what you were mentioning, Chair, about the parking. So that 1901 structure, the intent for that structure is really for our employees or for our vendors, not for customers. So we want to free up the lot behind our building for customers. And so, you know, employees, it's a short walk to work every day, and in addition to that, I'm going to be talking about some other things we're going to be doing to incentivize employees to ride share, take alternative means of transportation, things like this. But I just wanted to clarify that, that 1901, and we have another off-site parking facility as well, with an additional 25 spots at a building that we own in Irvine, both of those would be for employees, not for customers. So just wanted to clarify that.
Okay.
So to kind of jump into it, can you change this slide for me? Thank you. Next one. So as many of you know, my name is Mike Musali, and my partner, Mateo, and I have been Measure X operator since 2018. We were one of the first to receive the licensing for manufacturing and distribution here in Orange County, and through the nature of our business model, we've had a lot of exposure and gained a lot of experience throughout all segments of the cannabis supply chain. We work very closely with the city and the state and our local community over these last four years, and I'm proud to say, we've never had a single compliance infraction, security issue, and we are current on all of our local and state taxes. And even furthermore, the state reached out to us and selected Seven Leaf to be featured in their This Is California Cannabis statewide campaign. So we're excited to be bringing all of our expertise to the table here to open a retail store here in Costa Mesa. Next, please. So here you'll see a couple of the exterior renderings that were up there earlier. I just want to point out a couple of things about these renderings. The first is that we actually have two entrances to our store. So we thought about pedestrians, you know, walking down the sidewalk, and Fairfax, and ensuring that customers that park behind the building don't have to necessarily walk to the front of the building. So we have two access points to our store, which I think is going to create an easier bit of flow, and we're also anticipating a high amount of foot traffic to our store, which will also be utilized by that entrance right off of Harbor Boulevard. Also, you can see, we're going to be upgrading the existing building quite a bit, modernizing the property, and improving the areas around the property as well. Next, please. So here we have a few renderings of our store. One is of the lobby, where after a customer checks in with their receptionist, they'll be asked to take a seat and then wait for a High Seas sales representative to escort them onto the sales floor, where the actual cannabis product is. We'll have complimentary snacks and beverages for customers... We'll have complimentary snacks and beverages for customers and they'll be encouraged to browse our brand advertisement wall and enjoy our fish tanks while they wait. But more importantly, staff will be able to control the flow of traffic of customers from the lobby to the sales floor at all times. Once on the sales floor, the sales representative will ensure that each customer has the experience that they desire. Some customers will want more of a concierge-style shopping experience, while many will also want a really quick in-and-out experience because maybe they've ordered online and they're just here to do an express checkout pickup of product. No matter what, though, we want to create a retail experience alongside a shopping experience for our customers. Next, please. So one thing we're really excited about is our ability to manufacture and self-distribute a large amount of our products from Seven Leaf. Most of the products and many of the products initially and then eventually, most of the products that are in our store will be produced at Seven Leaf and will become part of our store's High C's house brand. And all of these products will focus on providing customers with the top tier of quality at affordable pricing. And the High C's house brand really is going to be a representation of our experience in sourcing, formulating, extracting, and manufacturing over the last several years. And it will, Seven Leaf will allow us to continue to innovate and help supply this store as customers' needs change and innovation changes. Next, please. Next one. So let's talk a little bit more about the parking here. So as Nancy was kind enough to mention, our site currently has 12 parking spots. We worked with staff and our architectural team to redesign this parking lot multiple times and essentially what we ended up with was the way to maximize the parking that's onsite the most as well as control traffic flow the best. We've taken the site from 12 spots to 16 spots. We also have two bicycle racks as well as a loading and unloading zone that is strictly for delivery vehicles and for distribution vehicles. We talked a little bit about 1901 Newport, so we have 20 spots over there under contract. We also have, as I mentioned earlier, another building that our ownership group owns in Irvine where we have another 25 spots. So in a very, very, very rare scenario where we outlive the parking or outsized the parking for maybe a special event or something like this at 1901 Newport and our lot, we can always utilize that additional parking as well. So we do have quite a bit of leeway here on parking. As I mentioned, we plan to have our employees and vendor reps park at 1901 Newport, which will free up the entire lot for customers. And lastly, we'll have the parking attendant. So the parking attendant will be onsite during all operational hours and the job of that attendant is to ensure a smooth flow of traffic in and out of Fairfax as well as in and out of the parking lot and ensure that our customers are not parking at our neighbor sites. I've spoken with a couple of our immediate neighbors right there in the alleyway, such as the gentleman that owned the mechanic shops. And I even offered up if we see that it's becoming any kind of issue, we're happy to even put signs above every single spot that says "No High C's Parking." We can even put signs in the plaza next door saying "No High C's Parking." But essentially, it's the job of the parking attendant to monitor these things and make sure if they see a customer park, get out of the car and head towards us, tell that customer they need to get in the car and they're not allowed to park there. And, you know, once our customers come to us once or twice, they're going to learn very quickly what our parking requirements are and where to park at our facility. So we do not anticipate this to be a problem over the long term or initially because we'll have the parking attendant. But again, customers will eventually learn as they continue to shop. Next, please, Nancy. Thank you. So with the traffic, talking about traffic management, so one thing we're really banking on for our business is partnerships with a lot of the local businesses around us. And we want to work with these businesses in order to have a beneficial relationship where some of their customers come on foot to visit our store and vice versa, some of our customers end up visiting their store. Specifically, businesses at Triangle Square, at the shopping center at 1835 Newport, Social, these are some of the areas that we've discussed. And I've talked to a few of the tenants that are immediately on either side of us and their businesses and they are interested in partnering. They've actually even approached me and asked me if it'd be possible to partner and work together to drive some customers one way and the other. So I'm looking to hopefully have a lot of customers coming on foot and that will help divert some of the traffic as well that may be coming from vehicles. Additionally, as part of our site plan improvement, we are proposing to install that fence on the south side of the lot. As I'm sure many of you are aware, our parking lot and the surrounding alleys and streets have long been used as a shortcut. And this shortcut is being used for vehicles to gain access to either 19th or Harbor. And the establishment of this fence will eliminate that two-way traffic from happening. A lot of the folks using that alleyway are not residents of the Mobile Park Home or customers of the surrounding businesses. They are folks that are living in neighborhoods that are around the area and they just want to use that as a quick shortcut. We've talked to several of the folks around the area and they've witnessed almost a few accidents happen and cars, I've seen it myself, just standing there for 10 minutes, cars whipping by, coming in from Fairfax, banking a left into the parking lot, another car coming from the alleyway, banking a left into the parking lot and head on looking at each other. So we looked at all the different scenarios here to kind of minimize traffic backup, make traffic flow easier and safer. And ultimately, that is what we came up with as the best-case solution to improve the traffic flow in the overall area. That gate, as a side note, will have a man gate in it that will be open for customers to access our facility. If there's, let's say, if there's some folks over at Social and they want to walk over and purchase some product, they'll be able to do so during operational hours. And the gate also has a rolling gate in it in the event, for whatever reason, there needs to be some access from 19th, from the alleyway over there to 19th. Next, please, Nancy. So security measures, I know a lot of them are covered in the project. You know, for us, we want to make sure we have a safe environment, not only for our customers, but for our neighbors and anyone that's going to be visiting us. So of course, with, in accordance with the law, we'll have a 24-hour security guard. This guard is going to consistently patrol the interior and the exterior of the premises, ensure there's no loitering and no one's consuming any cannabis inside or outside of the building. We also want to make sure that any patrons coming into our store are sober. And if they're not, they will not be let into the store. Additionally, we'll have the 24/7 surveillance of the entire premises and we will be making some infrastructure improvements to our actual building to, let's just say, fortify it. We're also going to be installing some exterior lighting on the building. This lighting is going to ensure that after sunset, there's ample visibility for the security guard while on patrol as well as for customers, employees coming and leaving our store on Fairfax as well as the back parking lot. Next, please. So community outreach. We really wanted to make sure that we were talking to folks and that folks in the area knew what was going to be coming and get their feedback and understand where maybe some excitement or some concerns may lie. So as part of our initial community outreach efforts, we held a meet and greet event back in December for all local community members at our retail building. We, the building is obviously empty, so we were able to have plenty of space and we set up renderings of our project all around the building and we cater food and beverages to all those who were able to attend. It was a pretty successful event and it was great. We got to introduce our team to some of our neighbors and some of the residents in the area and had a lot of good back and forth conversations with folks. And here are several pictures from the event. So in the weeks leading up to the event, we enlisted a third-party mailing service to send out invitations to every single individual business owner, business, building owner, business owner, and resident within 500 feet of the store. So over 350 invitations went out. And I'm happy to say that throughout that evening, we had over 40 people attend and provide feedback. Each invitation, oh, next one, Nancy, sorry. Each invitation also doubled as a questions and feedback form where we asked folks to fill it out and provide any information they would like to back to our team so we could be aware of any community concerns or excitement about the project and work towards remedying any comfortability issues. The majority of the feedback we received that evening was very encouraging and through the feedback forms. And some folks had questions surrounding security measures. Some folks had questions surrounding parking management plans. And we addressed each of those individually with each party and explained how we were prepared to handle them and go above and beyond to make sure that they were not going to be an issue. The information obtained at this event was very valuable. As in the weeks following the event, we actually took a lot of that feedback from the event and made several adjustments to our site plan to accommodate several requests of the local community and alleviate some of these potential concerns. Next, please. Then, over the last few weeks, once again, you know, we reached out to local community members to share the progress on our project, let folks know that, you know, we now, we're moving forward, we had a hearing date since it's been a few months, and see if there are any additional concerns or feedback that might have popped up over that time period and see if there's anything they wanted to share. We visited a lot of the individual businesses surrounding the building as well as engaged on one-on-one conversations with property owners and residential property managers. We openly, again, shared our site plans, our renderings, our parking and traffic management plans, our high-level security plans. And the feedback, again, was very positive and welcoming. And, you know, essentially, over the last several months, we've really tried to be as proactive as possible to engage the local community, to ensure that there is that comfortability with our project and provide neighbors with opportunities to discuss and address any potential concerns. Next, please. Thank you. So benefiting the community is another big thing that we are very serious about. So High C's, we want to provide several benefits to the immediate neighborhood but also surrounding communities. You know, first and foremost, we're going to be partnering with several of these local organizations such as Costa Mesa Foundation and, you know, of course, the Wetlands and Wildlife Center that goes in line with the theme of our store and our belief in ocean conservancy and protection. Second, we believe that local community members and residents are the foundation of our business. And so we plan to have the majority of our labor force be local residents as well as individuals with strong ties to our community. We'll be providing career programs for our employees to grow within the company as well as learn more about the industry at large. We will also be one of the first legal retail cannabis stores in Costa Mesa, which means we'll be one of the first to be able to provide clean, safe access to legal cannabis to consumers. And our store will be able to help combat the illicit market and operators that still remain within the community. Next, please. Cannabis education is very important for us. It's a big reason why we're also getting into the retail side of this because of the knowledge we have on the manufacturing and other supply chains, being able to share that with customers in a product form is very important. And, you know, our team's highest priority is to ensure that customers feel confident in what they're purchasing and they feel like they're leaving our store knowing more about cannabis than they did when they entered the store. Some other community benefits, through the implementation of our new site plan, we're introducing several new layers of security to our retail store that will also directly affect the surrounding areas such as a 24-hour guard, which will reduce crime and transient activities in the parking lots and surrounding driveways. And lastly, as you can tell from our renderings, we're going to be building quite a stunning store, which will not only provide customers with a fantastic retail experience, but beautify the area and give a much-needed facelift to our existing property. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Musali. Commissioners, Commissioner Eras, do you have any questions of the applicant?
I do, thank you, Chair. Mr. Musali, thank you so much for a great presentation. I've really enjoyed the last couple discussions we've had, particularly the one at the Chamber event recently. So thank you. If I can direct your attention to page 11 of 16 in the agenda report. The top paragraph, it mentions that you'll hire an employee to monitor the parking lot use and assist with customer parking lot circulation, encourage customers to take advantage of delivery service instead of store visits, offering an employee shuttle service, and incentivizing employee carpooling, cycling, and walking. I'd like to focus at the, at the end of that on what that shuttle service looks like and also how you, how exactly you're going to incentivize employees to carpool and cycle and walk and so forth, if you would, please.
Sure, no problem. So to address the shuttle service question, so the shuttle service would primarily be used if the Irvine off-site parking ever needs to come into use. And we would start off with a shuttle that runs three times a day, morning, middle of the afternoon, and evening. And of course, if we need to increase the amount of shuttle visits, we can do that as well. The building in Irvine that we have has a secure lobby, so folks are able to wait inside somewhere, not just hang out at a car. Employees wouldn't be just standing outside, they'd be inside of a secure building. A shuttle would pull up, it would pick them up, it would take them to High C's, they would unload, they would come into the store, they would work their shift, and then they would catch the next shuttle back to that parking lot. But again, this parking lot is really for overflow and overfill in a very rare scenario, quite frankly. I mean, we run the numbers on our end and 20 off-site parking spots plus the additional 16 we have for customers, plus having some folks come on foot or alternative means of transportation should be more than sufficient for our store. As far as the employee incentive and customer incentive program, so we haven't really settled on the specific numbers yet, but we are going to be offering a percentage discount to customers that can prove they're taking ride share to our store. And for employees over a longer period of time that, you know, let's say every week they come twice instead, twice to work, right? They work five days, let's say they come twice and they use a ride share program or ride their bicycle. We're going to have some kind of calculation and within the store that we keep, which will give them benefits and additional pay and things like this. Could be discounts on product as well if they'd like to purchase product at the store. But ultimately, we want to make sure that folks are traveling to us and being incentivized to do so with alternative means.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Musali. I'll direct your attention to the project description letter and your application that's attached to this application here under the parking section subsection for location. At the end of that first paragraph, and I wish I had a page number to refer here, it says, "High C's anticipates a good portion of its customers to arrive to the store on foot or through ride share or alternative transportation, which will help reduce the overall parking needs of the business." Was there some way that you quantified your anticipation of people using alternative means of transportation here?
Yeah, so this process started with us reaching out to the other businesses in the area and having conversations with them and understanding at a very high level, how many folks come in here do you know that have talked about cannabis or use cannabis? And essentially, our conversations led us to quickly understand that there's a lot of folks that could be customers of multiple businesses. Now, of course, every business is different, every other business is different, right? And so a pizza place may have more customers that would be coming to see us on foot than a retail shoe store, right? So it's a little bit hard to put the exact number on what we see there, but if I had to look at the overall pie based off the conversations that we're having with several folks and businesses in the area, I would say that we are anticipating somewhere around probably 20% to 30% of the overall foot traffic over time to be by foot. Another thing there is, you know, as folks get more familiar with our store, they're going to make it part of their routine as well. So if someone goes over to the 1835 Plaza and, you know, they go and they get Ike sandwiches, right? Then they may just say, okay, you know what, just going to walk across the street, go grab some cannabis product, going to walk back over there and off I go. So the routine will have a lot to do with it as well.
Great, thank you so much.
Sure.
Moving things along to the conceptual landscape plan. I made note of this recently in another planning commission meeting about California native landscaping. And I was just curious, more than anything, if you and your partners have discussed the possibility of putting in California natives as part of the landscape?
I'm admittedly uneducated on the different plants and shrubs and if they qualify as a California native, but what I can tell you is right now, what's proposed in the front, on the ground of the sidewalk, you know, abiding the building, we have mondo grass, they're like little grass mounds. And then we've got, we've got some planters that are... And then we've got, we've got some planters that are going to go right up against our building as well, and those have, I believe they're called Lily's, Lily's Kiss, they're tall, skinny, or green plants. So we're trying to keep everything very modern-looking, but I admittedly don't know if they fall under that category or not.
I would just encourage you to take a second look at beautiful California native plants, if you would.
Sure. Yeah.
And I think, lastly, just, I think what was really interesting in one of our conversations recently was kind of centered on the aquariums, right?
Yep.
And I was pretty enthusiastic to see the renderings there of not one, but two fairly sizable aquariums. And I don't think many people know this, but that's actually how I put myself through college, was I was an aquarist. So when I saw that, I got pretty excited. So I was going to give you an opportunity to maybe discuss a little bit of your plans for the aquariums, if you will.
Sure. So in designing our store, the three of us, you know, kind of asked, what are we passionate about and what do we not see? I mean, what would separate us from every other, you know, cannabis retailer out there? And, you know, we're all very passionate about the ocean, and I personally have always had a strong passion for fish tanks as well. And so I just kind, idea kind of popped in our head and said, hey, why don't we make this an attraction? And it was kind of interesting, the evolution of this originally started with us having smaller tanks all over the store, 15 tanks, let's call it. But after consulting with some of the best in the fish tank industry, we quickly learned the amount of headache and maintenance that was going to take did not make sense. At that point, we might as well just be a fish shore. So what we decided on was having one tank in the lobby and one massive tank in the sales floor. In the lobby, the tank is approximately four feet wide by four feet tall, it's about 500 gallons, and it's going to sit on a three-inch sta, a three-foot stand. The second tank will be dead center in the middle of the sales floor, and it's closer to 2,000 gallons. And that tank is about seven feet tall and six feet wide. We are having custom coral, acrylic coral built for both of these tanks where our logo and our name will be engraved into or carved into the actual acrylic. And we will have a variety of species in those tanks, you know, fish, starfish, maybe even a little bit of sharks.
Great.
So.
Great.
So, yeah.
Well, as, as I'm sure you know, you need a good protein skimmer for having sharks, so.
Unfortunately, I feel like the protein skimmer we have is probably worth more than my car, but, you know, got to make sure that, got to make sure those fish stay healthy. So, yeah, and, you know, of course, you can see in our plans, we, we had to design a couple of extra rooms just to house the equipment for these tanks and the, you know, and, and all the necessary stuff that goes with it. So it is a bit of an undertaking, but we do plan on it being a bit of an attraction. And, you know, just like anything else, I think it's going to drive a lot of interest at first, but once you visit our store once or twice, it's just going to be a fish tank.
We shall see. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Musali. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Eras. Commissioner Toller, do you have any questions of the applicant?
Sure, I do. Thank you. I'm thinking about this gate that's going to be installed on the south side of the property, and maybe this is a question for staff as well. I understand Fairfax and that other alley that comes from alongside Social to be public rights of way, are those public rights of way?
I, I think I'd like to have the Public Services, so I may be chiming in on that.
If you know or I know Mr. Seth Ramon's in the audience.
I can tell you that the, the property that, the, the circulation through the property is on private property currently. So, but the other areas, off-site property, I don't know, I'm not clear about it, but I do think those are private too, but maybe so.
So, so in reference to that, so Commissioner Toller, you were saying that Social Avenue?
No, the alley that comes from 19th Street, from West 19th Street and meets Fairfax. It just kind of, kind of raised a flag for me that we're putting a new gate across what I believe to be a, a public right-of-way. I just wanted to ask about that. I should have asked that earlier.
Okay. Commissioner Toller, we can get back to you on that. We'll, Public Services will research it and find out if it is indeed a, a public right-of-way.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And to the applicant, thank you for that presentation. I forgot to say, that was a really helpful and informative presentation. And I guess for you, I, I just have a couple of questions. For that gate, I saw on the plan that there's a pedestrian, I imagine that it was a little pedestrian portion of the gate that's going to be open all the time. Can you tell me about that?
Yeah, so, and just to address the, the question you had earlier too, Commissioner Toller, so as it stands right now, there are actual, in the current site plan, there are actual designated parking spots within the backside of that, of our, of our, of our lot. So I don't know if that indicates anything or not, but just to bring it up, there are, there are actual stripes on the current site plan over there.
On either side of that alley, is what you mean, right?
Correct. If you look, if you're standing behind our bills, building and looking at the Ocean Breeze Mobile Estates, there's actually three or four spots lined up right alongside that fence. They're, they're actually, they're, they're not vertical parking spots or horizontal parking spots. So they're right, they're, they're sitting right there, kind of in the middle of, of the, of the back of the parking lot.
Sure.
So, yeah, to answer your question about the gate, so the gate is only going to remain open, or our plan is to have it remain open during operational hours. You know, as you know, another issue with that alley are unfortunately transients coming through, which is why we currently had to get a permit to just even put up temporary fencing to fence off that lot, because unfortunately, we're seeing a lot of drug use back there and folks kind of, you know, setting up encampments and whatnot. So the other, the other point of this, of this gate is to help eliminate that. Obviously, you know, we don't want to have folks in our lot being uncomfortable, and we want to make sure that our customers are safe. So the gate will remain open during, or during operational hours, and of course, if, if, if an individual did come through that gate that probably shouldn't be coming through, security or the parking attendant would politely ask them to, to probably leave. And then in the evening, that gate would close, it would lock from the inside only, so there would not be a way to access that gate from the other side. And again, it would secure the lot and allow the security guard just to kind of patrol sort of one way versus have to worry about both ways.
Yeah, that makes sense. So it's not just about cut-through problems and, and keeping people within your parking lot, keeping customers in your parking lot. There's more to it. It's security and it, I, I understand that, I mean, you have kind of a no man's land back there of a network of driveways and alleys and parking lots, and I can see how that can.
Yeah, very, very much so. And, you know, again, we looked at different options, we looked at what if we didn't put the fence there, you know? What would that look like? But quite honestly, just standing out there for 15 or 20 minutes at a time, you know, our team looked at each other and said, this is going to be a situation, both from the transient perspective as well as from cars just whipping around that corner, just coming through and then exiting off of, exiting harbor from Fairfax. So I talked to staff, staff worked with us, so we, we came up with this plan that had the best situation, you know, to minimize traffic impact and minimize transients from coming into the area.
Okay. I, yeah, I, I look at, I imagine myself as somebody driving a car, showing up there and parking in the, the property immediately to the right of Baskin Robbins is, that, that seems like a no-brainer for me that a lot of people would, would automatically do that. And I, I, you know, that's, that's private property. I'm not, I'm not overly concerned about it, but I, I do appreciate that you guys have thought about that, and I know it's in your best interest to figure that sort of thing out. I appreciate what you said about the signs, the signage that you could put around, and the, the condition of having a parking attendant, especially in the beginning, I think is helpful. So where do you plan on placing that parking attendant?
So, two things, the parking attendant, we are proposing a permanent parking attendant, not, not just initially. And again, look, for us, our, our situation is, in terms of the parking, is no different than a lot of other businesses in the city, where customers could park where they're supposed to park or park in the adjacent parking lot, right? The difference is, we have a new store. That's going to be the difference. But that new store isn't going to be new forever. And it's our job, the burden falls on us as the owner of that property, to make sure that customers are parking in the right spot. And as I've shared with several of the tenants that are adjacent to us, I want to make sure we don't have those problems, because if I, if they, if I have those problems, they have those problems, and a lot of times, a lot of their customers may be my customers. And if they're not happy, then that's, I'm losing customers, right? So it, it just doesn't make sense. We need to make sure that this is not going to become a situation. And, you know, the only thing that can be done is policing it and attacking it proactively. That's pretty much what we do. As far as where the attendant will stand, so initially, and Commissioner Vivar kind of asked me a very similar question to this, initially, I picture this parking attendant roaming from up and down Fairfax Lane to sort of the edge of our parking lot, because we need to identify where is going to be, where are going to be the key points that the traffic needs to be controlled and adjusted, right? Maybe it's not going to be right off, right, right as you come into Fairfax, maybe it's going to be right at the edge of the parking lot, maybe it's going to be at the edge of Fairfax. We don't quite know yet because we haven't seen how the flow is really going to work, but essentially, after three or four weeks of operation, we're going to have a very good idea where the parking lot needs to be stationed, right? And of course, if need be, there will be an additional parking attendant as well, if you cannot be in two places at once. But we're pretty confident, given the flow of the traffic and what we're expecting to see from a customer perspective in that parking lot, that we are going to be able to manage that successfully with one individual and, and a, and a security guard helping at times too, when there's patrolling the lot as well.
Sure. Yeah. To me, my, my specific concern was you got to catch them real quick before they turn into that parking lot on the right, and how, how could you fit somebody in there that's able to catch them? But I think what you, your answer, your answer is, you answered the question, and I think, um.
Well, and to that, to that point too, we don't want to have backup on harbor, so when the lot is full, the parking attendant will have a sign that they will, we will place before you get to that right turn, so cars don't come in and then have to turn around and leave, right? And the sign will be very, very specific, "High Seas Parking Lot Full, No More Parking Available," and that's that.
Okay. Those are, those are all my questions right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Russell, do you have questions? The applicant?
Just following up on that, your last comment about having a sign that says that the parking lot's going to be filled, will there be some, will there also be additional information on there about that you have, that they need to go park on at the 1901 parking lot? And how, how do you see that operating? Because, you know, just, because when I went down there
Yeah.
and kind of drove around, I thought, that's, if you don't know where you're going over to the 90, 1901, you can't just go down 19th Street and make a left turn, you have to go up and around, and it's, that's going to be challenging.
Yeah, so, you know, again, on a day-to-day basis, that lot will not be used for customers. Quite frankly, when our lot is full, our lot is full. And, you know, we are going to have to manage our business to make sure that customers, the flow of customers come in and out, so that we don't have situations where we lose 10 or 15 customers. But again, based off the calculations we've done and understanding the flow, the average time of a customer in the store, all this stuff, we feel pretty confident that with those 16 parking spots, we're going to be okay. Now, initially, maybe the first week or two after, you know, our opening, there's going to be some buzz around the store, it may be a little bit more challenging. But ideally, we're not looking to have customers park at 1901. We are really trying to use that for our vendors and our, and whatnot. But if a situation comes up where we have to use that lot, then most likely, what we're going to have to do is make a map for customers, and as customers pull up, we'll have to have another individual come outside, the parking, they'll see the sign, hey, High Seas is, is full, right? But we'll have someone standing on the corner over there, and we'll see as cars come up, looks like they're coming to High Seas, we'll be able to hand them a map as they go by, pretty much, something, something of that sort. We also have, I don't know if you're aware, but in front of the building, there's actually four or five street parking spots too. It's like a little inlet almost, right? And of course, those are not our designated specific parking spots, but often, as we've seen over the last several months of owning the building, those are open and free. And so we won't find a situation where we direct customers, it's not like, here's a sign, figure it out. We would be directing customers. We most likely post it on our website as well, as an additional off-site parking map.
Okay. I think that was my main concern. I, obviously, parking
Sure.
is, is probably our biggest concern
Of course.
at this location. Thank you.
No problem.
Commissioner Vivar, do you have questions to the applicant?
Yes, sir, I do. Thank you, Mr. Musali, for your presentation and for your patience with my many long emails.
No problem.
Would you dive a little bit further into the outreach that you did to the Mobile Home Park residents, to the residents? Because you, in an email, you said that you spoke with the site manager, or a property manager who was located offsite and couldn't get in touch with the manager onsite. And then I walked around and spoke to a couple of the residents, and many of them didn't know that your site was coming on, which was, I mean, a bit interesting to me. So I just want to see if you can explain a bit further.
Sure. So, as I mentioned in the presentation, the initial outreach we did was back in December. And to my knowledge, every single one of those residents did receive an invite and a letter in a feedback form to our event. We did have a couple of residents show up at the event as well. And so that was an opportunity for sort of a meet and greet scenario. Then, a few weeks ago, I had reached back out to the assistant property manager of the Mobile Park Home and had a very good conversation. She asked me a few things about the parking, a few things about the security, about the lighting and stuff like that. We went through each one together, and I shared renderings of the store and additional information on the store. And she had told me that the, the main property manager over there has been out of the country. And she would pass the information along to him and, and give him my number so he could reach out with any questions or concerns or anything like that. And so I also asked her to please circulate the renderings, because she obviously has a, a master list, you know, of everybody there. I asked the renderings be circulated to the residents to make sure they could see it. And I offered out my cell phone that anybody, any resident could call me at any time with any questions. So unfortunately, I didn't get to connect with the, the main property manager, but then I didn't hear anything, so, you know, I assumed that, you know, he received the email and looked at everything, and there weren't any issues.
And by connecting with a couple of residents, do you mean, like, a couple meaning two?
Yeah, there were like two or three that came to the event that night. Yeah, we had a total of about 40-ish people or so in the area. Part of my conversation with the assistant property manager was also about some of the existing signage on the fence, that wrought iron fence that abuts their, their lot. And they were kind of asking, did you guys put that up? We said, no, we haven't touched anything. You know, we, we wouldn't, we wouldn't touch anything without having a conversation. And then that sort of led into the conversation about, you know, the, the wall going up and all that to protect the residents from the lights of the vehicles. So we did have a pretty in-depth conversation. Again, I, you know, I tried to reach out to, to folks there and, and, and open myself up to feedback and questions and comments, and, and we did receive questions and comments from folks in the area.
What were some of those questions and comments?
Some of the questions were surrounding the security. So what is the plan for security? How do we know, for example, that we're safe coming in and out, accessing the, the gate area over there? How do we know that that parking lot's going to be safe at night? So I explained, we have the 24-hour security guard. I explained, we've got, you know, pretty much cameras everywhere, so there isn't a square footage outside of the restrooms of our facility that is not under, under camera. And we also talked about sort of the, the flow of, of people, how they're going to come in and out of the store, the two entrances and stuff like that. Parking was another, another question, you know, where are the, where are your customers going to park? I explained, we're redoing the site plan, you know, shared that we're going to be increasing parking spots on our actual site versus what's existing there. We were going to be repaving everything and that, of course, they were still going to have that, that driveway and access. We weren't, we weren't cutting off the Fairfax Drive in any way, so they'd still be able to get in and out free-flowing. Those were the, the major questions. There were some questions about product, you know, what kind of products are you guys going to offer, sort of, you know, what do you see your price ranges being? Where's the product made? We talked about all that stuff as well, explained that, you know, we've been Measure X operators for four years and that a lot of the product we'd be providing from our own facilities here in Costa Mesa. But those were, those were generally the, the concerns and questions we received from, from folks in the area. Those are, those are the primary things that were discussed.
Did you consider Did you consider maybe sending out a mailer in Spanish? Since I, I think some of the residents there have a pretty poor handle on the English language.
I, I did not, to be honest with you. I, you know, I don't know the, the specific demographic of the overall area very well. You know, I had just sent it out. And again, it was a pretty, you saw the, the presentation, it was a pretty detailed letter with a detailed feedback form. So, yeah.
Yeah, I guess the reason I sort of commented, bringing that up is because I, I was appointed to represent District Four, which is majority Latino. So that's why, kind of like one of the concerns I feel I should be bringing up as District Four Commissioner. But anyways, moving on. So regarding the fences, so you're, I, I think you gave a pretty good response there to Commissioner Tollers' question about the fence. So you're saying, if we were to get rid of those fences, you're saying that the concern is the speed of the cars through there? Is that, was that the main concern?
It's, it's a few things. One, speed of cars, volume of cars, and transient access through that back, back alleyway. Traffic management also becomes more challenging at that point. Because in that situation, now you've got to watch cars coming in from two different areas of the parking lot versus just one. So you may have folks trying to back up into a spot coming one way, or go, you know, backing out of a spot coming another way. So we looked at the circulation of everything. And that combined with, again, kind of cutting off that area from potential transient problems. That's why we ended up with that situation.
And so I, I just, in my mind, I think that once you have the security guard, that'll probably help with the transient problems. So I, I think it's safe to assume that there probably won't be any, once you have that post-security guard. So in my mind, I think the problem that's, that's probably left is, is speed. So in that case, had you, say, were the transient problem not a, not an issue anymore, had you considered, for example, instead of the fences, having, say, speed bumps or some kind of speed reduction mechanism?
We, we could do that, but we would still run into a very similar situation where, again, the majority of people accessing that our parking lot as a drive-through are not folks that are in the immediate community. And that area, so we could slow them down theoretically, right? But if we slow them down, now we're going to have traffic backing up within our own lot potentially, or all back out on Fairfax Drive.
Okay.
Because again, we've got people coming from two directions now versus just one.
Right. So regarding incentivizing people to park offsite, I think the chairman did bring up some pretty good points regarding people possibly just parking elsewhere, which is quite easy to, easy to do. And I don't know if there's a good way of sort of policing that, sort of making sure that people do actually park at your designated parking lots as opposed to elsewhere. And just as you said, you would be willing to possibly put up signs at the adjacent little commercial center there, or the commercial buildings. Something that just came to mind is a conversation that you said that you're, I guess, have a parking agreement for 20 spaces with that office building across the street, which is, you said, seriously, it's, 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 it has a sort of large, large amount of available parking. So those, so that's a lease agreement you have for those 20 spaces, right?
That, that is correct. Yeah.
What just came to my mind as I was listening to the presentation is just as you're incentivizing people to, your employees to, to, to take alternative modes of travel to cars, do you think you might be able to, say, post signs at those 20 spots? And maybe have like some kind of a QR code there to, when, maybe making that parking lot across the street the, sort of the main parking lot? And if people park there, maybe give them some kind of an incentive to guarantee that you are going to be, like, that you're not going to be impacting any adjacent parking spaces? Is that, do you think you, is that viable?
Essentially, in my opinion, Commissioner, it would kind of work the same either way. Meaning that if the 16 spots were used in our lot, then your idea is, is a very viable one. If we were to use that additional, those additional 20 parking spots for customers rather than employees or vendors, right? But really, what this comes down to again is, is, you know, managing parking and making sure that our customers aren't parking where they're supposed to. It, you know, if, if, if the commission feels appropriate to put a condition in there that, you know, our customers cannot park anywhere but our lots, I'm totally okay with that. You know, we just need to make sure that we are policing it properly, which we fully intend to do based off of the staffing that we're allocating for this and the parking management individual. But I don't, I, I don't have a, you know, a better solution beyond, above, above and beyond what we've already, you know, offered up.
Right.
Because a lot of it is just, is policing and being good neighbor, right? I mean, the same thing could happen to the liquor store down the street, you know?
Sure. Yeah. Because I, I think, yeah, maybe incentivizing people to park there for your overflow parking is sort of good for everybody. Because well, one, it wouldn't, we would minimize the impact to adjacent parking. And your customers would then have a place, a guaranteed place to park. And they wouldn't need to go elsewhere for, you know, cannabis or materials, once you have more competitors online.
Yeah, I'm, I'm definitely open to incentivizing customers to do so. If, if that lot actually needs to become an overflow parking lot.
Sure. And then, so you, there's that condition then, that garbage truck operations cannot happen outside of the hours of 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And so I asked you in an email about the delivery vehicles to your sites. You said they're kind of like vans. I'm not entirely sure. I, I'm not very familiar with those. Do they make a lot of noise? And would you, for example, make sure that any delivery or distribution personnel coming in, you know, don't have their vehicles idling, which, you know, might obviously send fumes and noise over to the Mobile Home Park residents?
Yeah. So these vans are, they're like standard Dodge Sprinter-type vans. I mean, we're not talking about, you know, big 18-wheelers or anything like this.
Sure, sure.
You know, we're talking about regular, let's call it cargo transit vans, right? They're, they're even smaller than a UPS or a FedEx truck in most cases. I mean, ours for our distribution facility, like I had mentioned, is, you know, it's a Ram 2500. It's quiet, just comes in, goes out. It's not really a disturbance there. And as, you know, I kind of laid out for you in that email, these vans would, would be scheduled. They would come right into the lot. They'd pull right into that loading and unloading zone. Product would come out right away, go into the receiving room, and then the individual will be on their way.
Okay. So since you said that you want to have your parking attendant be permanent, I kind of want to bring your attention back to my earlier comment, or my question to Jennifer Rosales of Transportation Services, to explain about the certified flagger training, which again, is only four hours and like less than $100, which is obviously a drop in the bucket compared to everything else that you're spending on permits and things for this. So is that, I'm leaning heavily towards possibly making that a condition? I, I think it's going to be good for everyone. Because well, one, you know, the person you have out there directing traffic, I think, needs to really know what they're doing, you know, for their own safety, but also obviously for the safety of residents of the Mobile Home Park, maybe walking in and out, people who are driving in and out of the Mobile Home Park and the automotive repair shop, as, as well as your customers. So is that something that, did you understand that description that Ms. Rosales gave of what that training entails?
Yeah, I did. And I, I have no problem with that. Yeah, I have no problem with that.
Okay. And then, final question. So circling back a bit to one of the beginning questions posed here by Commissioner Toller regarding what happened to the previous businesses. So you may remember that back when I visited your Measure X facility, you gave me a bit of a, a background information, which I found helpful, as to your dealings with the barbecue supply store owner. Would you be able to maybe explain a bit about that here for sort of everybody's sake? And as well for what happens with the gym store, or the little gym workout facility owners as well?
Mr. Moselli, before you answer that, so I just, in the interest of time and efficiency, I don't think it's the commission's business or really anybody else's what transpired between an applicant and a former tenant of a building. It's, they're gone. I don't know what we would do with the information. I don't know what the public would do with the information. I just think we ought to stay focused on the application and not, you know, what happened to a tenant and why. That's just my two cents, Commissioner Vivar.
Mr. Chairman, I, I, I understand that. I appreciate your comment. But maybe if Mr. Moselli, if he'd like to take it up or not, I, if he doesn't, I completely understand.
How about a quick summary, if you will?
Sure.
So the, the barbecue tenant, they were having supply chain issues. This was during COVID, the tail end of COVID. And they were having trouble getting the steel they needed for all their barbecues over. So they were not, they were not doing too well. And they were looking to get out of their lease. So it ended up working out really nice. With Malacca's training, the owner, his name is Dale, very, very nice guy, they actually relocated over onto 19th, 19th, sorry, Newport Boulevard by Industry Way over there, almost by Hope Hospital. He's got a bigger facility now. And long story short, without getting into great detail, he was totally open to moving. We incentivized him as well. We compensated him. And he was happy. And, you know, everyone went their way.
Perfect. And yeah, I, I, I think that, sort of that, that's great. That's a good way to, you know, do business. And I commend you for that. And Mr. Chairman, that, that's it for me. Thank you for, for this. I cede my time.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Moselli, I have no questions for you at this time. I will have some other questions for staff after I open public comment. But thank you very much for your time at the podium.
Thank you, Chair.
We'll open up public comment on this item. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak, please come forward. State your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. There's two podiums, there's two podiums.
And we'll start with you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Kurt Herperts. I, my business is at 234 East 17th Street, Eastside Costa Mesa. Basically, a lifelong resident in Newport Beach, Costa Mesa. The property that received little accolades in this is 1927 Harbor Boulevard. You reference properties south of the subject project. My property includes 1927 Harbor as well as 1907 and 1909 Harbor. 1927 Harbor has the shared driveway Fairfax, which is, for the record, privately owned. I would dispute the property line as shown on the applicant's plans, because I have plans that were produced in 19, in 2012, when we remodeled the property. And it shows our property line going out just about basically to the center of Fairfax. In any event, at some point, the property line is in that, that location. I improved the driveway, reasphalated it, regraded it back in 2012, because the property owner at the time would not do so. We designated it as a fire lane. There is a, unfortunately, a number of delivery vans that park there quite often. There are also semi-trucks that come in there, maybe not for the former tenants at 1921. But we have Baskin Robbins, we have Domino's Pizza, and we have a mailbox store. So they're having delivery trucks, FedEx, so forth. That driveway, by the way, is 150 feet long, give or take. It's 25 feet wide. It is a one-way driveway, essentially, when any car parks on it. So the idea of having a two-way driveway there would not be possible if there's parking allowed on the side, where someone happens to park there. Is that three minutes?
You have one minute left.
Okay. Unfortunately, your process has been going on for nine months. I learned about this first last Thursday night, and received the conditions on Friday morning, and did not know about the public hearing until several days before that, because I happened to be on a five-day vacation. There's massive issues with the parking and traffic. This is like trying to put a round peg in a square hole. The property is underparked, the subject property is underparked by almost half. It's laughable to think that customers would drive over to 1901 19, or 19th Street, and then walk over through a six-lane plus, essentially highway, our Harbor Boulevard, with a signal stop sign, that they would get there and then buy their product and then go back. It's just not going to happen. I don't want to answer any questions there might be about my property, because it's the most effectively directed.
Can you confirm for me again, which properties you own immediately adjacent to the subject property?
1927 Harbor, which is on the north property line of the subject. My south property line would be abutting or is contiguous. And then 1907, 1909 Harbor is where Basil Mediterranean Grill is, a restaurant that's got very good reviews, as well as Australian Sport Nutrition at 1907, 1909 Harbor. It's between the Beauty Supply Store and the Bicycle Shop.
Yes, I'm familiar with it. And so you're the property owner of that, those, those two businesses?
Yes.
Own the structure?
Well, the real estate, not the businesses.
I understand that. I understand that. And have you had conversations with Mr. Moselli in the past about the application?
Yes, only on Friday, when I reached out to him. Prior to that, he did agree to meet with me, and I appreciate that. I had made no less than five calls to the planning department in the course of four or five months, and did not receive a return call when I had heard rumor that the, a project was being developed. But I didn't know anything about it until Friday morning.
And I'm sorry, sir, for, I'll get to you. But, but he's got some, did you have problems with respect to traffic and parking, or customers parking on your property when Barbecue's Galore was there?
Not so much with Barbecue's Galore, because they're on the far side. But the, the workout facility.
Well, barbecue, okay, I see what you're saying. Okay.
Yeah. Barbecue's Galore was on the south side of the, the property. The tenant that was very small tenant on a relative basis, was the workout facility. And yes, we did have problems with them. But it's interesting to note that that property was originally built in the late 1940s, and it was a furniture store for 30-plus years, which has very high inventory and very little need for heavy parking. And then over time, well, they, they moved out of there around the 1980s. And then since then, it's been a very difficult property because of the parking.
So 1909 and 1907 are, were immediately adjacent to Barbecue's Galore. They're south.
No, there's the 19.
There's the alley in between them.
Right. Exactly.
Okay. All right. Yes, I just, I'm just trying to square why, if this is approved, Mr. Moselli's retail business would be different from a Barbecue's Galore. That's, I'm trying to understand why there's a distinction now.
Well, and the staff's own, Barbecue's Galore had, at any given time, they might have one or two customers in there. By the staff's, your staff's own recommend, or analysis, this particular business would have 775 trips per day. That doesn't include, and that's on Fairfax. All of that would be on Fairfax. The balance of, of the traffic would be the 40-unit trailer park, which is going to have roughly, let's say, five trips per day, per trailer. That would be 200 more. And then my property would have at least 100 per business, and there's five businesses there. There would be somewhere between 1,000 and 1,500 trips per day on that property. And there hasn't been a traffic study done on this, this project. I think that begs the question of why not?
Well, it's because it doesn't generate 100 trips per day, which triggers a traffic study. That's the reason.
No, we're talking 1,500 trips per day.
I don't know that that's the number. But anyway, I'll confirm it with staff. But thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. My name, my name's Evangelo Karentonis. I'm a Costa Mesa resident. My wife and I moved out here in 2010 from Cleveland, Ohio. And she's officed over in the South Coast. And, and we currently live off of Tustin Avenue. And I'm just here to show support and, and very excited for the project and, and how cool and how immersive of an experience it's going to be. I know Mike, Rachel, and Mateo closely, and they've worked extremely hard and thorough to check all the boxes needed to get this project across the finish line here. to check all the boxes needed to get this project across the finish line here. And I'm just excited about the opportunity. I just wanted to come in.
Okay, thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Lynn Mack. I have been fortunate to work with Michael Moselli on the Cannabis Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors here for the last three years. I also sit on the board of a dispensary in a neighboring city, and we've had the same concerns with traffic. I'm here to say that I support legal cannabis. I am very familiar with Michael's plans for High Seas. And one of the things I think that will come to light is, with our experience, a customer spends an average of seven minutes in a dispensary. And it is not something that people are going to show up at designated hours with consistent numbers of when they stop by. It's typically like any other business. It is a consistent, non-consistent, drive-by-to-stop-in, and again, come in and pick up product. We don't sit in the car, can't open the products in the car afterwards. So, it's just like picking up groceries, or liquor, or any type of food. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Benjamin Encinas, and I'm one of the owners of the businesses at 1927 Harbor Boulevard, the automotive repair shop. And while the folks from the project have been very good about communicating with us, we still, we address, or we ask them to address some concerns, and everything as they presented to you today, you know, that's what they've told us. But we still have a concern that some of you have had, which is the parking. The, I find it hard to believe that one parking attendant is going to be able to do everything that they need done. I just want them to take a closer look at that, because it's going to greatly affect our businesses. I happen to be a over-30-year veteran of the LA County Sheriff's Department, and I currently work on a project in the unincorporated LA County area. My opinion here is not based professionally on anything that the Sheriff's Department does, but what I deal with is exactly this, the parking issues that come up surrounding cannabis shops. And it's a huge problem in the area where I work. And whether they have parking attendants or not, uniformed deputies and parking enforcement officers have a hard time getting customers to follow the directions, because they know that they just can't be towed in the amount of time it takes for them to run in and grab their stuff. As the lady explained, six or seven minutes they're in and out, tow truck takes 20 minutes to respond. And again, they disregard uniformed law enforcement officers. I don't understand how one person is going to be able to do that. I also have a concern with them, something that they have never shown us before, excuse me, showed us before, is the sign that says lot full. We have two driveways that enter into the complex, and if they put a sign out there that says lot full, they're just going to drive right past us. Our own customers will just drive right past. And that's just going to offend away some of our business. I'm not, I didn't even have time to even really think about that till now, when they presented it. So, I would like to say, I think, yes, we're kind of opposed to that. And I can say that in the time we've been there, the parking has been an issue, even with the lower traffic that they're proposing, of the past businesses, with what they're proposing. And my experience with the county of Los Angeles, it's, it just generates a lot more traffic. And again, people just tend to be, well, I'm only going to be a minute. And I find it hard to believe that one of their parking attendants is going to make one of their customers get out of our parking spot to go in and grab their product. It'd be easier for them just to kind of let it go. I'm not saying that they would do this, but it's what happens already in my personal experience. And I'm sure if our customer was parking in their parking lot, they'd be very quick to make sure that they went to our spot. So, I just, you know, it's a definite concern.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else in the chambers wish to speak to this item? Yes, sir, please come forward. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Rob Romero, and I'm a business owner in Costa Mesa. Also, I've been living in Costa Mesa for over 24 years. And I know Mateo and Mike for over 16 years now. We talk about, previous, they started their business, we talk about partnering up with the community and working together to cross-promote our business together. And I believe that Mateo and Mike, they're good people. I've been knowing them, like I said, over 16 years. And I'm about all of the community, too. I got a small business that I, the community is very supportive of my business, and I try to support the community back, too. And I'm excited about their things. Hopefully, this goes through with them. But that's all I got to say.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir. Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to add a couple of comments and some color to some of the other speakers. So, I've spoken with Ben and Jose a couple of times. We've had some great conversations, and really appreciative that they've opened their arms and engaged with us and had conversations. So, just to clarify on the parking sign, it would read High Seas Parking Lot. It would be very specific. It wouldn't just say Lot Full. So, that way, folks are not, they understand it's our parking lot. And if a customer's visited us once, they're going to know where our parking lot is, right? We're going to, that's the whole point there. The other thing is, I'm hearing some concern about one parking attendant maybe not being enough. I'm okay if we need two attendants as volume grows. I'm fine with that, too, if that's somehow written as a condition. I'm not opposed to that. Again, I want to make sure that these issues do not happen, and I want to be a good neighbor. So, I'm willing to take that on. As our capacity grows, or if we see there's an issue, I'm okay with that. And if it takes one person just to stand there and monitor parking while the other monitors traffic, I'm okay with that as well, just to let you know. Also, as a quick response to Mr. Herbert, so we did meet a couple of times. We spoke on the phone on the week of July, sorry, June 13th, for a good almost hour, shared with me a lot of concerns. And I shared with them, you know, we had sent out that letter to the community. I'm not sure why it didn't reach him, probably got lost in the mail, because it was the exact same mailing list we used for the CUP notification. But anyways, I'm very grateful that he took some time to meet with us on Friday, and, you know, shared our renderings with them, a lot of details about our plans and things like this. And ultimately, I had mentioned to him, I went to all of the tenants of his buildings, and introduced myself. For the owners I couldn't get ahold of, I left my card, asked people to call me, said, hey, I'm going to be coming. I want to talk to you guys. And for the owners I did speak with, specifically Basil Mediterranean's and the Australian Gold Places, both of them shared nothing but excitement for this project. As a matter of fact, they both asked me how we can partner up. You may have even received a letter of support from one or two of them in email. So, I kind of shared that with Mr. Herbert, that, you know, a lot of your existing tenants are excited about this project. And, you know, it seems if they're, if they have concerns, that should be, you know, the primary thing, because their businesses would get hurt, right, and ultimately hurt your pockets. So, we did have multiple conversations. And, you know, again, no matter what happens here tonight, I told Mr. Herbert, we want to be good neighbors, and I want to make sure that we are in a comfortable position and that we respect, you know, his properties. Thank you. Okay. Ma'am, I'm sorry. Want to speak? Please come up. Yes, ma'am, good evening.
Hi. So, I own Baskin Robbins on 1927 Harbor. And so, I know Kurt did say that we didn't have any Barbecue's Galore customers, but we've always had that, and they were always parking right in front of Baskin, walking over, getting whatever they needed, and coming back. So, parking is an issue, and I understand the concerns. You know, we have the concerns as well, but I'm very high traffic. So, if my customers, like, I have high traffic with customers. So, if I have no parking because of this issue, then it becomes a burden on me, because I lose my business. So, I just want to make sure that we have an agreement. I haven't even spoken to him, because I wasn't there when he dropped off his business card, but I wasn't aware of any, you know, community outreach for, like, looking at his plans in December. So, I never received that, but I'm very, you know, I'm very close with the High Tech Auto, and Kurt and I speak all the time. So, I just wanted to make sure that that's an issue. And then, I also have delivery come every week, so that becomes an issue as well. So, that's just my concern, just the in-and-outs. And I get it, you know, seven minutes, but if you have, like, if you guys have this experience there, then it lasts longer than seven minutes. So, I just, that's a concern that I do have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Yes, sir, please come forward. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Jose Moran. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, High Seas. Again, I just want to bring up the same concerns everybody's bringing up. I am one of the co-owners of High Tech Automotive. We are right, we would be right next to them. We would be sharing a lot of the same traffic. We get a lot of customers throughout the day, coming in and out. We get a lot of deliveries of parts every day. That's how we do our business, is we order a part for a customer, they come and drop it off. So, we get a lot of deliveries coming in for our business for that. So, we have a few parking spots that we use, that we share with the other tenants there at 1927 Harbor, you know, and part of it is for our customers, part of it is for us, our parking. And, you know, we usually put our cars there when we finish a customer's car, so they can pick it up, because we can't keep it in our business, or else it's taking up a, you know, a lift, as we call it, so where we do our repairs. So, parking is always going to be a concern, and they have addressed it, and we've talked about it. I'm still not 100% convinced that it's going to work very well with regards to a parking attendant. You know, so security is also going to be a concern. We get, you know, everything from a Honda Civic to a Lamborghini that shows up at our shop. So, Ferraris, things like that. So, security is going to be a concern with regards to the people that are going to be, you know, showing up to the cannabis shop. The other concern is, we get a lot of the customer, a lot of our customers are from the trailer park, the mobile homes there, and a lot of them are Spanish-speaking. I'm a Spanish speaker myself, so they feel comfortable coming to me, and they speak to me in Spanish. So, the conversation has come up that, hey, there's a cannabis shop, kind of be showing up. And a lot of them didn't know. Even just recently, I had a customer today that I was telling them that, hey, we're going to have the public hearing, public hearing today for the cannabis shop. And they didn't know that there was going to be a cannabis shop showing up, you know. So, anyway, so I don't know if there was just not enough notice, or maybe because there wasn't a Spanish-translated notice that they didn't know. So, just like Commissioner Vivar, I'm concerned about that. But that's most of what my concerns are. Again, security, traffic, parking, and notice to the mobile home people who are the Spanish-speaking residents. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the chambers? Kate, Julie, do we have anyone on telephone or Zoom that wishes to speak to this item?
No, we do not, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I will close public comment then. I have some questions. I'm going to turn to the site plan here, and maybe, well, first, let me ask, let me ask this generalized question. Did the applicant submit, as part of his application package, a parcel map that was accurately surveyed, that showed property lines?
No, one was not submitted with the CUP.
Okay. The other question I have is on, oh, and by the way, just my little rant last meeting, thank you for the photo method for me and the light plan. I appreciate that very much. I, it's, you know, it's important to me. It may not be important to other Commissioners, but it gives me the visual to know that there's not going to be a light spill into the adjacent residential neighborhood. And so, that's important for me to know, and I'd like to know that on all the applications. This, Commissioner Toll's question about the alley and is it a public right-of-way. What's curious to me is, if it is, there's a telephone pole sticking right in the middle of it. So, I kind of think it probably is not a public alley or right-of-way. Maybe it is, and it's just an odd place for a utility pole. My question is, do we know if there are any easements related to those poles on either side? Usually, when you have an overhead line, the utilities want a certain amount of space on either side of the pole, so they can access it. And is there a problem putting a gate or a fence structure right next to it or underneath it?
So, we did have, asked the applicant to submit some title information, and it did include some easements in various locations throughout the property. Our city engineer looked over the easements, and we tried to locate them. We have some exhibits that we're going to look a little bit farther into. Some of the language is a little cryptic, but with regards to easements, there are sewer easements, there's utility easements, like you mentioned, and there's also driveway circulation easements throughout the property. So, with regards to the fence, we are going to look a little bit further into that with regards to severing the access there. But...
What would be the remedy if an easement got in the way of that? You just don't build the fence?
Correct, correct. Yeah, you just wouldn't have the fence. But when staff visited the site, we also noticed the pole, which made us believe that there probably wasn't, unless the utility was placed in the access easement. It certainly wasn't a public access. None of the easements cite public, for public use purposes.
Right.
Which makes me believe there's, it's more of a private easement with neighboring properties. Again, the easements are from the '40s, so it's hard to figure them out. And the maps, the lots have been re-divided, so it's nearly impossible, if you're not a land surveyor, to figure that out. But the title officer provided us some exhibits. They're very rudimentary, but they're located in several locations, and we're going to relook into them to make sure that fence isn't a problem.
How about, so, how about the location, so the, I can't tell from the existing condition versus the proposed site for a plan, but the pole's not moving. Everything's going to get built around it, right? Right. I can't imagine Mr. Moselli wants to move a utility pole. So, it looks to be that the gate is located south of the utility pole. And then, there's the pedestrian gate right next to it, and then the trash enclosure. So, from my perspective, and this isn't, this isn't having any bearing on my decision, it's just that, let's make sure we're all buttoned up nice and tight on any easements that people need. I'll be particularly interested to see if they like those doors from that trash enclosure swinging open into that pole. I don't know, but, I mean, important things to look at. See what else. I noticed, just I was Googler-ing while some of you were talking, and I was looking at the, that back lot. It looks like at one point that that lot was striped for tandem parking. Am I wrong, or?
That's correct, but we don't allow tandem parking.
No, I understand that. I was just curious as to, okay.
Yes. Or you can look at them as really deep lots, deep parking spaces.
Really long cars. It was a limousine service. I don't know, okay. Make sure I got my questions answered. Oh, yes. Maybe Ms., I don't know if Ms. Rosales looked at. So, I want to have a, an understanding of what exactly the traffic expected peak in trips are. I know, so, we don't, we don't require a traffic study unless you exceed 100 in trips at peak, correct?
That's correct. The threshold is 100 peak hour trips.
Right. So, just for, particularly Mr. Herbert's remarks, we're not generating 1,500 trips a day here, are we?
The traffic threshold is for peak hour trips.
Right.
So, 100 peak hour trips would typically be equal to 10 times that. So, like 1,000, but 100 is the, is the threshold.
Okay.
And peak hour trips, so.
Okay, I understand. Okay, and that's what, that's the world we operate in, is peak hour trips.
For traffic studies, that's correct.
Yes, okay. All right. Does the ITE manual, is, is the trip counts that they have in place for cannabis, retail cannabis, is that, they, they don't have, they don't have a metric for that yet, right? You're relying on, what was it, pharmacy drugstore?
We're, we're using pharmacy drugstore with drive-through, which is the most appropriate trip generation rate for the types of cannabis applications in Costa Mesa. There is in ITE, in the most recent version, a cannabis rate. However, the number of studies that are in that rate calculation are very limited, and the, also the trip rates are scattered, so there's no consistency and very limited number of studies.
So is that number generally higher than pharmacy drugstore with drive-through? Even though it's scattered and not really more anecdotal than it is?
It, it is generally higher if you look at the average. However, the size of the sites that were studied that are in that rate are much larger than these, and more like the 10,000-plus square footage versus, there was nothing in their, in the, in the locations that were studied that were under around 5,000 or 6,000 square feet.
Okay.
So they're all in the very large size. And also, those sites were located in areas that didn't have multiple dispensaries nearby.
And how many, so what's the, what's the number of trips per thousand square feet for a, a simple retail store like a Barbecue's Galore?
Yes, okay. Yes, so in terms of strip retail, would be, it's 6.6 PM trips per thousand square feet. And that's compared to, for a pharmacy, pharmacy drugstore with drive-through, it is much higher than that, which would be 10.25 PM peak trips per thousand square feet.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions of staff? Commissioner Erath, before I close the public hearing?
No, sir, I do not. Thank you.
Commissioner Toller?
Yeah, I have just one question for staff, and I, I've asked this a few times, but there's a lot of people listening that weren't here at the last meeting, and just for the sake of the, the public record, say everybody's worst fears come to fruition, and this is just Karmageddon as soon as it opens. They're backing up on the harbor, they've taken up the entire parking lot next door. Can you just real quickly walk me through the process of, at what point does the city intervene, and what do we do?
Mr. Drapkin?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. We do have a condition that is a kind of a catch-all condition, which basically says that we need to go back and revisit the issue and solve it. And no certain, no specific words, but it, it does specify that, basically if there's traffic or parking issues, we go back and look at it and we solve it through various options. They give, they give, it signals what type of things that might be done, but it includes many things. It's actually operational condition number seven, and it basically talks about if parking shortages or other parking-related problems develop.
Okay, thank you.
And it might, it might include many types of recourses, which at the end could be potentially revocation of the permit.
Okay.
That's all, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Commissioner Vivar?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have also one question. So, I think something that kind of, I kept hearing over and over from the public commentators, and also from yourself, Mr. Chairman, is the concerns about parking, and how we are going to keep this from impacts to adjacent businesses. And Mr. Masali said that he was open to having some sort of a condition or provision here that parking for a site, for vehicles accessing a site would be strictly limited to the parking lots that he has, namely the ones, the one behind his site and the one across the street. Is that something that we can actually put as a condition of approval, and how do we make sure that that's actually being enforced?
I'm sorry, Commissioner, could you, could you repeat that?
Could we make a condition of approval that limits the customers for the High Seas only to the High Seas parking lots, the two of them?
Yes, that, that can, yes, that can be a, a condition that the Commission can consider.
And as a?
It would be under an operational condition, or alternative, alternative, excuse me, alternatively. There is operation condition number 20, give me one second.
No problem.
Number 25, which is about the parking attendant, to, to ensure that customers are, and vendors are using consideration when leaving and entering the parking lot. Commission can, can consider adding to that condition to also require the parking attendant to monitor and make sure that customers are not, are only parking within High Seas parking lot.
Okay, and if somehow the city were at some point to get complaints from the adjacent businesses, say the automotive repair shop or the Baskin Robbins, that High Seas customers are in fact parking in their spaces, and with that same catch-all condition earlier that Scott mentioned when answering to Commissioner Toller, would that also be triggered in that case?
Yes, it would.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. That's it for me, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Okay, well, these ought to be fun. So I'm going to say off the top, I have no, there's no doubt in my mind, none, zero, that Mr. Masali will run a terrific operation. I just, I don't have any doubt about that at all. I'm concerned about the location, but I think because retail cannabis is a new business in town, we're kind of all, you know, if you grew up in my era, what's now becoming legal was, if, if you smoked it in the 60s, you grew purple hair and a fourth eye or a third eye, and now we're all kind of, you know, we're all relaxing now a little bit, and, so, this is a retail business. I mean, plain and simple, it, it isn't, just because it's new, and it's a little bit scary, you know, we're, we're almost looking at it like we have to, we have to run it, we have to pull it through a keyhole like no, no other business we've ever pulled through a keyhole before. I don't think that's fair. The community voted to permit retail cannabis in Costa Mesa, and we're fulfilling that mandate. I think it's very important us to look, for us to look at locations. I think this one is inherently problematic. Doesn't mean it will be a problem, but it certainly has the potential to be a problem. And I'm more concerned about overflow parking, although I would disagree with Commissioner Vivar on quote-unquote "requiring" High Seas customers to use High Seas lot. Even though I ask questions about people walking over from here or there, but somebody may go to a movie at Triangle, and instead of going and getting their car and then driving and parking at High Seas, they might walk over and then go back to Triangle Square. So I, I, and I don't know how you would enforce that. I don't know how you would enforce that, you know, if somebody comes out of High Seas, what are you going to ask them? Where'd you park? Oh, at Triangle. Well, you're, you can't do that. I don't think that's what Mr. Masali wants his parking attendant doing. So I, I think we have to recognize that people are pedestrians at some point, and they will walk from social or dinner, or from the courtyards, or maybe come from their workout, and then they'll go and, and visit High Seas, they'll walk. So I, I don't know that we can condition that you absolutely must use their parking lot and no other parking lot if you go to High Seas. So, but I am sensitive to Mr. Herbert's tenants, even though they all support it. They may all support it now until they figure out that their customers can't get into their businesses. And I'm, so I'm sensitive to his concerns, I'm sensitive to the potential concerns the tenants may have in the future. So what I'm going to ask for as a condition is, I would say for the first 90-day of operations, that they have two parking attendants, one on each side of the building. So one at Fairfax, one at the other side, making sure that people aren't pulling in parking or using that little alley. They think they can get through there, and then there's, they're screwed because they hit that gate, pardon me, I shouldn't have said that. They're out of luck because they get to that gate. So I want to make sure that there's some kind of monitoring of that initial flow of traffic. It's, it's, it's going to be outsized when he opens for, for a while until, you know, and things normalize. So it's like a new drive-through restaurant, you know, it, it queues five miles down the road for, you know, a couple of months, and then it, everything normalizes and everything seems to be okay. So I'd like to have that, two attendants for, for 90 days, and let's see how that works as a condition. I'm also going to ask, and this is probably going to be true for future applicants whose site looks a little weird to me from a parking perspective, I'd like to have the CUP come back for review in six months, after six months of operation, to the Commission, just to have a look-see. It's not to threaten anybody, let's just make sure these things are operating smoothly, and if we have to tweak a condition, we can tweak, we can tweak a condition. So it isn't, I don't want any applicant saying, oh my God, they're going to call me back up in six months. That's not what I'm suggesting. It's like, come in, let's see how it's operating. Do we need to tweak anything? Yes, okay, let's tweak it, off you go. No, we don't have to tweak anything? Great, you guys are running a, you know, a clean shop. So, I'd like to have it come back for review in six months. He won't be the only one that comes back for review in six months, probably. Because Costa Mesa, these older buildings, these old retail buildings built in the 40s are notoriously underpart for today's environment, and so we're going to have to carefully monitor how they work out rolling out this new industry. But I don't think it's going to be, you know, I was looking at Peoples OC Lot, they have like 24 spaces, you know, and that's a pretty big shop, I think. It's two stories, and, you know, I, I don't, you know, I used to, my dear deceased mother used to go there, I used to drive her there for her CBD, and I don't remember it ever being like packed, where you couldn't get in and out. So, anyway, so, so if we can just have a second attendant for 90 days, just to make sure, and so people, you know, learn, people learn, okay, well, I better not park there. Also, and this is something that I think we need to continue working on, is let's see if we can find a way to either mark the spaces in front of the other business that says, you know, Australian whatever it is only, or the name of that business right in front only. I don't know that Mr. Herbert wants a no High Seas parking sign on his building, but maybe if the spaces were labeled, that might be a deterrent. So, those are kind of the, you know, those, that, that doesn't need to be a condition. I think you guys can work that out, but definitely the second attendant for a bit, six-month review after, after, after he kicks off operations, obviously. And, and let's see how it goes. So I'm going to, with those conditions added, I'm going to move, find that the project is categorically exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act, Pursuit and Guidance, Section 15301, Class 1, existing facilities, and approved planning application 21-14, subject to the findings in Exhibit A, and conditions of approval as amended by the Chair in Exhibit B. Is there a, and I'm going to go back to my home. Yes, I made the motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, seconded by Commissioner Russell.
Mr. Chairman, can I interrupt, please? Was the public hearing closed?
It was. I closed the public hearing.
Okay, just wanted to double check. Thank you.
If I don't, the public hearing is closed. Thank you for staying on top of me. Any comments on the motion, Commissioner Erath?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Commissioner Toller?
Sure, I have a couple of comments, thank you. So, just circling back on just a couple of things we talked about before, the gate, I was looking at it, it looks like that alley is kind of a U-shaped alley that comes off and back on to West 19th. And I agree with you to that. The fact that Fairfax is a driveway, when you just look at it from above, that makes sense. I was worried about the precedent that would have set of allowing a private property owner to, to straddle and close off a public right of way, but I'm not worried about that. And I totally understand why the applicant wants to do that. Just to speak really quickly on my comment on the previous businesses and what happened to them. And I agree with you, Mr. Chair, that, I agree with you to a degree that that's none of our business. But the reason I brought it up is because we, we have unleashed a very highly profitable land use into the city that has the potential of something like commercial displacement. And I don't, I, I agree with you. What, what are we going to do with that information? You're right, and I don't mean to pry. Part of me wants to just keep one eye on that, and I'm curious to what extent that useful local amenities, small local businesses are, are leaving the neighborhood. Okay, just keeping an eye on that. But I, I totally agree that let's not dig too deep there. Regarding parking, a lot of people mentioned parking. So this is downtown Costa Mesa, arguably downtown Costa Mesa. We're, we're an urban environment. We have over 100,000 residents in our city. This downtown is about 100 years old, almost 100 years old. We're talking about a one-story empty building, and we're debating as to whether we should allow a new business to move in, one that's going to provide a, a major facelift, it's going to provide security, it's going to have a positive effect in the vicinity. I understand the concern about parking, but I would ask, what, what's our, what's our solution to that? A, a business wants to move into an empty one-story building downtown. What, what are we, what do we propose? Not let a business move in, to raise half the building, to make more room for 12 or 16 more spaces, to, to allow a non-retail use, to allow, to turn our downtown into, what, more, more office space, or some, some use that isn't going to create activity and attract people? So, I get it, but I think planning for cars in an urban environment is a fool's error at the end of the day. We're doing everything we can to, to make driving free and easy for everybody, and I encourage you to go on Google Maps, Google Earth, turn on satellite view, and look at, look at the environment. Zoom out a little bit, look at all the greasy asphalt, look at the blocks and lots and all the right-of-way, all that infrastructure that we pay for. And it's, it's all for cars. And even, even with all that, it's still just a headache every time a business moves in. So, I get it. I wouldn't want to walk from 1901 Newport Boulevard either, and I, I would encourage everybody to think about why you wouldn't want to walk from there. The staff report, page two, it says the existing development is legal non-conforming in terms of setbacks, parking, landscaping, and floor area ratio. So, so if you stand on the sidewalk there and look at that one-story building downtown, and you ask, what's wrong with this building? Our code would answer everything. Everything's wrong with this building. It's not far enough from the street, not enough of it is dedicated to vehicle storage. Everything is wrong with the building. And if you spun around and looked at the six lanes of 40 mile an hour traffic and said, what's, what's wrong with this? Our general plan, our circulation element would say nothing. This is perfect. This is exactly how we want it. Now, I would encourage everybody just to think through how that, how, to what extent that's consistent with your experience. So, I sympathize with the concerns over parking, but I think it's in the business owner's best interest to make sure that it works. I think the parking attendant is a good idea, and I am supportive of the motion, Mr. Chair, two attendants, fine, come back in six months of review, I'm okay with that. I think our code enforcement, our planning department are capable with working with the business owners and resolving any issues that might arise. But ultimately, I think it's government overreach to be putting these sort of parking mandates on people that want to invest in our city, invest in the downtown of our city, too. I don't think these parking mandates are, I don't think they're fair, I don't think they're sensical. You talked, Mr. Chair, you talked about coming over from Triangle Square, that's a perfect example. What if I wanna park at this new business and I see Baskin Robbins? Or I wanna ice cream at the hot day, it's summertime, how do I get there? What, I gotta drive, right? And I wanna try this basil place, I drive by all the time, I never stop, now's my chance. There's a phone repair place, I've been meaning, what do you do, drive from one to the other? It just doesn't make any sense. We keep trying this, and it just doesn't work. It's a dead-end road to keep planning for more and more cars. And I think, I think doing that is antithetical to our vision, as expressed in the general plan, for an urban, walkable, safe, comfortable environment for people. So I just wanna say to the applicant, bike racks, entrance off the front, you didn't have to do that, but you did, it would've been easier just to, you know, your customers are mostly gonna come from, from the rear where the parking is, but you decided to put entrance in the front, and that makes Harbor a little bit better, you know? And if Harbor's a little bit better, maybe the next guy will put a door out front, you know, and bike racks out front. There's a positive feedback loop that can happen. Is that enough to fix Harbor? No, but it's taken us in the right direction. Incentivizing alternative modes of travel, all that stuff is great, I appreciate that from the applicant. So, sorry for the long-winded comments, I wanted to give a different perspective on the whole parking issue, but, but I'm in support of the motion, thank you.
Commissioner Russell?
Well, first of all, as always, I wanna thank the staff for their excellent report and all of their diligence in providing information. I also wanna acknowledge the applicant, I mean, that was a lot of outreach, and I know there were some responses that, oh, that wasn't enough, or, you know, we didn't hear about it, but an extra mailing, a meeting, that's, that's something, I think, above and beyond. And maybe for future applicants to think about the issue of making sure that our Spanish-speaking neighbors know that that's what that letter says. That would be my only, and I, I'm glad that you added the second parking attendant for 90 days, I was going to suggest that, because I, you know, I think, yes, it's probably, what do they say, boots and, or belts and suspenders, but for the first few months, it'll probably be just a good outreach to the neighbors and provide a little bit more support. Anyway, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Vivar?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I also think that the presentation from staff and from applicant was very thorough, very great to get all my questions answered. I also support the idea of the two parking attendants for the first 90 days, and I, I like that the applicant has voluntarily added the one permanent parking attendant. But like I said, circling back earlier to my earlier concern that both parking attendants know what they're doing and are able to keep themselves and the public safe, I would like to propose adding to your condition, Mr. Chairman, that the two parking attendants for the first 90 days and the permanent attendant do receive the certified flagger training from the ATS SA and the, that they submit the proposed training to the city and once, once the city okay's that, and once they complete the certification, that they get back to transportation services for them to confirm that they have that valid certification.
So with all due respect, Commissioner Vivar, I don't wanna make that a condition. I think it, it kind of singles out this particular applicant or this particular industry that somehow, because some, some circulation management is necessary, I mean theoretically, you, at Christmas time, you may need parking attendants at South Coast Plaza, and I don't know that they've all been certified to, I just, I think it's an unnecessary burden, and I, I think if, I have a feeling we're gonna have a lot of storefronts in Costa Mesa that are similarly, that are similar in kind of layout and parking and access, and I just, you know, I think he's gonna have more, he'll, he may only have two attendants on at a time for his 90 days or one attendant on, but he's probably gotta hire four or five maybe because if one goes down or one's sick, you have to throw somebody in, and we're just starting to, I don't know, I just, I feel like we're starting to burden them with things that, mm, you know, I don't, I just don't know that it makes a material difference in the operation of managing access and traffic and parking, so I will not add that to my motion, but I understand why you're saying it and I respect it, but I, I'm not gonna agree to that.
So you feel comfortable with the safety of the parking attendants who would be working the site as well as the public, is what you're telling me?
I do, because he's gonna be liable if something happens to him or, you know, they're his employees or he's got workers' comp and, you know, those costs aren't cheap, so. I do, so, but I appreciate you offering it, but I will respectfully decline. Do you have any other comments on the motion?
Would you mind reminding me of what your conditions were?
Conditions were two parking attendants for the first 90 days, a six-month review of the CUP to see how operations are after six months, and then we can make adjustments if we have to at that point, and then those were the two, I believe. Mr. Drapkin, is that correct? Yeah, I, you know, I would appreciate that if Mr. Masali and the property owners, adjacent property owners, maybe staff work on some, somehow labeling the spaces so it looks like, you know, "Don't park here" or "No cannabis for you", something like that. Okay?
Okay, I would like to at least say that, have a recommendation there, sort of software language that might be more palatable, that the parking attendants at least have a meeting with transportation services to sort of maybe have their input on any possible traffic concerns they, they feel in that. We have to remember here that this attendant will not only be managing the parking entering the 1924 site, but also cars that will be accessing those six parking lots in front of where the Domino's is and as well as the vehicles entering the mobile home park.
Well, if I remember correctly, I think the attendant is only directing traffic that's going into High Seas. It isn't, there's no way Mr. Masali's gonna have an attendant be responsible for traffic going into, into the mobile home park community. That's a huge liability for him or anything else, I wouldn't agree to that either.
Well, but I, what I'm trying to say here is that the parking attendant will undoubtedly still deal with the traffic coming into those, into the mobile home park, even if it is not directly entering the 1924 site and therefore does have to sort of, you know, if, if there were to be a high event situation, high traffic event, manage the 1924 park vehicles as well as the traffic wanting to flow in and out of the mobile home park, which, let's remember here, their only access point is Fairfax.
Yeah, I, again, I appreciate your concern, I, I think we're overthinking it, I think, I don't wanna have to have staff deal with a bunch of parking attendants for every applicant, because we, if we do it for these guys, we're gonna have to do it for everybody else. And to have them, have, have staff take up valuable time to brief every parking attendant for every cannabis shop in Costa Mesa about how to manage traffic from multiple different storefronts or residential communities is, they're understaffed as it is now, so I can't agree to that.
Then maybe just a recommendation that the parking attendants just review professionally-made free training material online for their own safety and the public, and again, that's just a recommendation, whether or not they do it is up to them.
Okay, and I think Mr. Masali just, I saw him jotting down notes, so, you know, I'll take that under advisement as your, as your comment, I appreciate that, and I know where you're coming from, I just, I just don't wanna micromanage these things.
You know, I'm just sort of thinking, I, I'm a person that can't drive, and so I imagine that, say, if I were living at that side and I needed to walk out from the mobile home park, how safe would I feel? So that's kinda like where I'm approaching this, but I appreciate you listening to my...
Commissioner Vivar, I'm completely, I'm completely sensitive to that, I understand. Any other comments on the motion?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Julie Rolcall, please?
Commissioner Toler?
Aye.
Commissioner Russell?
Aye.
Commissioner, sorry, Chair Jericho?
Aye.
Commissioner Vivar?
Aye.
Commissioner Erath?
Yes.
Motion carried 5-0 with Commissioner Rojas and Vice Chair Zick absent.
Okay, and that decision is final in seven days unless appealed to the City Council. Good luck, Mr. Masali.
Thank you.
Okay. That ends public hearings on the agenda for this evening. Public Services, report, Mr. Yang. We have no old business or new business, so Public Services, report, Mr. Yang.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Mr. Chairman, and honorable members of the Planning Commission, good evening. Tonight, the Public Works Department is pleased to announce that the construction of the Wilson Street Improvement Project from Newport Boulevard to Placentia Avenue will begin sometime during the second week of this July. This project is a Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG, federally funded project that seeks to improve traffic, bicycle, and pedestrian mobility. Scope of this project consists of the installation of a new crosswalk in Medium Refuge Island in front of Wilson Park, which will encourage safe pedestrian crossing. A new high-intensity activated crosswalk, or HAWK, signal will be installed at a future date. The project also includes installation of curb extensions or ball belts at certain intersections between Fordham Drive and Fairview Road. In addition, the project will also include parkway maintenance, street rehab, rehabilitation, parkway improvements involving reconstruction of curb and gutter, sidewalks, accessible curb ramps, and new sidewalks. Other enhancements will consist of newly installed bicycle lanes with green conflict zones where feasible, and greenback shadows, street striping, and markings. Street rehabilitation will include removal and reconstruction of damaged pavement sections, milling and overlaying with new asphalt, street ceiling, adjustment of utility and manhole covers to grade, and implementation of traffic control. So once again, the Public Works Department is pleased to bring forth this project in improving and enhancing Wilson Street. Thank you, and I defer back to the chair.
Thank you, sir, very much. Development Services, Mr. Drapkin, any reports?
Nothing tonight, Chair.
Okay, Mr. Preziosi, City Attorney, any report tonight?
No, Chair, I have no report this evening.
All right, thank you very much. Commissioners, thank you very much for your good work and all your good questions. Staff, thank you very much. We'll stand in adjournment till the regularly scheduled meeting of July 11th, 2022. Good night.